Call to order the Tuesday, December sixth, twenty twenty-two, Town Council regular meeting. Oh, sorry. Actually, Clerk McCouch, would you like to call the meeting to order?
I am here. You call it to order. I will call the roll.
All right.
You call the meeting to order.
Recording in progress.
Okay, the meeting is called to order at six thirty-three?
Mayor, I, I see, I'm online, live with the Zoom recording, and I see Councillors Franco, Jones, Melendez, Cassie Harry, Bride, and Westervelt. Am I missing anyone besides yourself there?
Councillor Baumgartner is on the line.
I have Juliet is missing and Andre Baumgartner. Are they coming to the meeting later? Do you know?
Andre is entering now remotely. All right, Councillor Baumgartner.
Okay, so we have Councillor Baumgartner remote. So Juliet, is she coming in? I haven't seen her yet.
Not yet.
Councillor Baumgartner, I don't see her yet. Okay, I'll let you know when she arrives, okay? They have seven, or eight, excuse me, eight councillors, which is far succeeding in four.
All right. Could we now stand for the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for religious stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justiciable.
Thank you. Onto receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@groton-CT.gov by four P M. on the day of the meeting.
Mayor, we do have one attendee who did sign up prior to the meeting, prior to the four o'clock, Anne Marie Foster.
Okay. She can be recognized right now. Anne Marie Foster, you have the floor. Just say your name and address for the record.
Anne Marie, oh, Anne Marie Foster, fifteen Route twenty-seven in Mystic. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, I would like to speak about the article in the paper about the Branford Manor incident. As an advocate myself, I have to defend advocates for having to speak however it is necessary to get the attention of the people for whom we must advocate with. And if Ledge Light was not, if the inspectors were not aware of the situation and how life-threatening it has become, that's the, the bad of their management for not telling them what they were, what they were getting into. So I defend Councillor Bordelain for speaking from the heart to help the residents of Branford Manor. And I'm very disappointed that it wasn't taken that way by the Ledge Light people. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Christina Tejada.
Hi, my name is Christina Tejada, one ninety-four Branford Avenue. I'm here to discuss basically what's been going on since the last time I've been here. So the last time I've been here, I was basically kind of forced to go back home because things weren't done at my apartment, and just the hotel arrangements weren't done properly. Since I've been back, um, just November fourteenth, after being in my home from September up until the fourteenth, I was put into a temporary apartment in the L-plex that I live in, two doors down, which I requested so that my kids can hang out with their friends and just continue their regular way of life, and it is not out of the norm for them. We've been in this apartment. This apartment had a nail sticking out of the steps. First apartment was filthy, it was never clean. It didn't have the proper beds for us. We were supposed to have, I, I have a composition, it's four of us, it's myself and three boys. We were supposed to have beds for all of us. We had one queen bed, one twin bed, neither one had frames, they were on the floor. There were no sheets. The apartment was supposed to be set up as a home. We had a sofa, we had minimal stuff that you would need to transition over. But the apartment itself was not in good condition. It was filthy. There was a lot of repairs that needed to be done, which I've had some of the repairs done. Friday, they came to fix a wall that was literally, like, when you turn the switch on and off of the light, it would go in. I have pictures of everything, and they fixed it on Friday, and the last night, after I left a city council meeting, I went to turn the switch off, and I zapped myself. So they're not doing anything properly. My apartment was supposed to be renovated from when I left the fourteenth, November fifteenth was supposed to be the first day of work. No work has been done. I was promised that December fifth, the work was gonna start. Still, no work has been done. I'm one of the apartments that was on the list for the city inspections, that was supposed to be done fully by November. We're already in December. I had to spend my son's birthday, November twenty-second, and Thanksgiving in this temporary apartment with boxes. I had family come over. If they weren't gonna do work, they should have never moved me abruptly. They made me move within four days. I had to empty out a whole entire house. The third floor, which is where we sleep, two bedrooms, the first floor, our living room, kitchen, dining room, and my entire basement into pods. I later on found out as well that the pods that they gave us, my key can open every pod in Branford. How do I know that my stuff are safe? These are all my belongings. So I had to go out and purchase keys and a lock just to make sure that my stuff is secure. It's like, they basically hype you up. I put my faith in them. I literally sat down with the person that is the site manager for all the construction. He told me everything that was gonna get done in my house. We did a walkthrough. As soon as they moved me out, that everything that he promised me changed. I was supposed to get my walls fully gutted. Now they're saying they may gut them. It's possibly they may not. It's like, what is the point in this? Why keep moving us around if you're not gonna do the work properly? At this point, it's like, I lost faith. I came to him, and I'm like, you know, I'm gonna give you guys a try. Let's, I'm gonna give you my trust that you guys are gonna actually live up to these promises. And I gave it to them, and I've been there going on a month, and nothing has gotten done. Nothing. I'm in the same L, so I see what goes on. One of the days while I was in this temporary apartment, I had witnessed some contractors going into my apartment. H O U told me no work was gonna be done. So I walked over, and I was just curious, like, why were they there? When I asked the man why he was there, he couldn't give me a straightforward answer. I asked him if he could just sign his name on a log sheet, why he was there, what company he works for, because people are entering their units, and Branford Manor has no knowledge of it. So I'm like, to cover you, cover me, just write your name down. He was being very disrespectful. He kept telling me to shut my mouth, and it turned into me telling him that I was gonna call my lawyer, and he literally told me that my lawyer was B S, because his million dollar, his million, well, multi-billion dollar, excuse me, lawyer is better than my lawyer, and my lawyer has doo-doo on him. I don't wanna curse. I don't even know how to say the phrase, but she doesn't have anything on him, basically. It's like, they're, they're bullying us too. They're contractors, and they're not even treating us with respect. They're entering the temp units that Branford Manor knows what apartments are vacant, have been turned over to H O U as a temp unit, and they're walking into these apartments while mothers and children are not dressed properly. They have no reason of being in these apartments. They're lying to the people, like, oh, I just did work last week. These families have been in these apartments over a month. There's no way you did work last week. They're coming in with keys, with their lunch, at twelve o'clock, to go hang out in these units. They're asking people, tenants, if they can heat their food up in their apartments. We just found out one of the contractors spent the night there from Friday, overnight. That's, that's not right.
Thank you.
But thank you. I appreciate it.
Next on my list, I have Felicia Ramos.
Hello, my name, my name is Felicia Ramos. I live at one seventy-eight Branford Avenue. I kinda wanna just speak on a little bit of what she was speaking on. The lack of communication that Branford Manor has with their contractors and H O U and everything is ridiculous. They're shutting off our water without letting us know, not sending us any type of notices that even that they're not gonna, they're gonna enter our unit without letting us know. Our lawyer has given us, like, signs that say, you can't enter without our permission, or at least a forty-eight hour notice is to be given. A lot of the contractors and the maintenance have told us that they told them that to still enter our unit, even though they don't have permission. They've been caught entering a unit where there's been a single mother, and she was pretty much half naked. And she told them not to enter, and they were like, oh, we were here last week to fix the, the bathroom. She's like, I've been here all week, and nobody has been here to do any work, so I don't know what you mean. And he pretty much got a nasty attitude with her. Another thing is, they're not giving us notice when they're shutting off our water. So we're getting our kids ready for school and have no water to get them ready for school. Like, how are they supposed to brush their teeth or shower or anything? On top of that, they're like, telling us, like, trying to get us to allow them to enter our unit, even though we already told them, like, I need a forty-eight hour notice at least, or at least speak to our lawyer. On top of that, they're not fixing anything. Like, I was told my unit, they're only gonna just do the basement. They're not gonna fix anything else. I still have yet to have them paint my ceiling. I was the one with the hole in the ceiling for a few months. They covered it, but never came back to paint it. I'm just, like, frustrated with everything. We're still getting sick. Like, I, I'm just over the whole situation. Like, it has to be better communication. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Ramonita Ramos.
Hello, I'm Ramonita Ramos. I live in forty-four Branford Avenue, Grand Connecticut, zero six three four zero. I just wanna apologize about my glasses. I'm recovering from a concussion. I'm sorry, I'm a little frustrated. I fell down my stairs on September twenty-third, and I've been having a really tough recovery. Branford has still not come in to fix my stairs, and I have been out of work. I'm sorry. I've been out of work since September twenty-third. And it's very frustrating, because I am a single mother. At some point, I was gonna cry. I have been trying to get my memory back. I didn't even know my name. It has been a very, very hard two months. I have not been able to do anything, deal with migraines. I've had to use GPS just to take my son to school because I don't know how to get there. And I've been working really hard on my progress, and I finally was cleared to go back to work only four hours, starting on Thursday. And it's been really, really difficult because Branford had no issues going into my apartment previous to it without letting me know, even though on my, on my file, it says that I need to be present because I do have a pet. And now that I've been home for two months, they have not come into my apartment at all. They haven't fixed anything. So it's very frustrating. I wanna thank you, Portia, for always offering your help and offering me to drive places and, and being there for me, because we don't get any answers. They don't tell us anything at all. And it's very frustrating, so I appreciate your support because you've been there through the whole thing, and it seems like you're the only person that keeps coming back. I'm sorry. I'm done.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Richard Deslaurami.
Good evening. My name is Richard Deslaurami. I live at one seventy-four Branford Manor, building thirty-nine. I had also talked with one of the construction workers about what they were gonna do in my basement. They told me they were gonna put a dehumidifier in my basement with some wiring, and they told me that they were gonna put the dehumidifier on the outside of my building and run a ducting through the basements, from my basement all the way through the other apartments. They came on Tuesday, and they were informed not to show up until at least ten o'clock. I was woken up Tuesday morning at quarter of eight of somebody walking around in my apartment. I went down there, downstairs, and checked it out, and they were just had, getting out of my apartment, and they were trying to lock the door. And I knew they were in my apartment because they left my cellar light on. I opened up the door, and I gave them a few choice words, but they said, well, you know, we, we have paperwork to do work here. And I kinda like told them, I said, hey, that's, that's not a license to enter people's apartments. And I told them that they weren't supposed to show up till ten o'clock. And actually, I was frustrated, and I slammed the door in their face. About twenty minutes later, I calmed down, and I let them in, because they were all standing outside my door like a bunch of seagulls. What am I gonna do, you know? And they came in, and they told me how much of my basement I have to move some of the things away from the walls so they can do the work. I said, okay, so I, I moved the things. Half an hour later, they came back, and they decided they're not gonna do any work in my basement. But now, I've been living there for twenty years. And the reason why I got this apartment, because it had a basement. I'm an ex-musician, a singer-songwriter, and I had all my equipment downstairs in the basement, and I got rid of, like, ninety-eight percent of my equipment because they told me they were taking it away from me. After a couple of years after I moved in there, back in, well, I moved in in two thousand and three, and about two thousand and five, I was having problems with the basement being leaked, you know, having leaking coming in. So I, I talked to Branford Manor about having it fixed, and nothing ever got done. And this went on for years. So I went to the Housing Authority and the Health Department and told them about the conditions. And it was, wasn't until last year, they finally fixed it. And, and they did a good job. It doesn't leak anymore, which I'm grateful for. When I got out of the hospital, I, I realized it was done, because I was in the hospital. I had lung cancer. And they took a portion of my lung out. Some of it was due to smoking through the years. And a lot of it could have been caused from the asbestos that I had in the piping in my basement through the years. And the fiberglass particles that was floating around in the air through the years, which I notified Branford Manor that it was put in upside down. So all the particles were able to fall down and get blown around through the apartment. But they never did clean up the, the parking lot. We still have piles of gravel. It's getting higher. They did remove some of the gravel, of dirt and stone and boulders. They got rid of that, and they started a new one. And, but nothing's getting done. It really isn't. But I do wanna thank you, all of you, for helping us out. We still have a long way to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Catherine Pratt.
My name is Catherine Pratt. I live at seventy-five Front Street in Nowank. Mayor Melendez and members of the Town Council, good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to express my support for reappointing Eric Goodman to the Town of Groton Historic District Commission and promoting John Goodrich from his current position as an H D C alternate to one of the positions now open for a regular member. As a longtime resident of the community with an interest in Mystic's proud historic and cultural heritage, I am concerned by the unsettling trend toward tourist-oriented commercialization in the Mystic Historic District and a general disregard for historic district standards. There is extensive literature showing that designated historic districts draw permanent residence and supporting businesses and promote an area's intrinsic economic value and quality of life. If there are consistent gross deviations from historic district, district guidelines, those benefits will be squandered. I was disappointed in the H D C's majority decision to allow the demolition of Downing Cottage at seventeen Gravel Street, which lies in both the Mystic River National Register Historic District and the local Mystic Historic District. Downing Cottage reflects the Gothic Revival style popularized in this country by the visionary nineteenth-century landscape architect Andrew Jackson Downing, credited by historians as being a vital influence in the creation of New York City's Central Park. Located on a prominent waterfront street, this charming cottage is an integral component of the iconic vista of historic homes visible from across the Mystic River. Eric Goodman and John Goodrich strongly opposed the destruction of Downing Cottage, a position corroborated by an outpouring of citizen concern and by the State Historic Preservation Office, which ultimately intervened to save the building's principal structure and historic facade. Eric and John also objected to the proposal for a rooftop bar at the Mariner Restaurant, an open-air venue with significant implications for noise disturbance to the surrounding neighborhood. Bars on rooftops and decks which are proliferating in downtown Mystic capitalize on the charm of the, of the historic district, but can also destroy it. Eric is a local developer and builder with a prior career as an attorney. John has a degree in art history and historic preservation and lives in a house built in seventeen forty-five that he is painstakingly restoring to its original state. Together, they bring passion and a wide range of hands-on experience to supporting and sustaining the H D C's prescribed mandate to protect and preserve an area's historic, architectural, and cultural attributes. I hope the Town Council will support these eminently qualified and motivated candidates. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Margie Gugens.
Good evening. I'm Margie Gugens, twenty-sixth Daniel Brown Drive, Mystic. Commissioner on the C D A C Committee and mother to Councillor Franco. Once again, another town councillor is in the newspaper because of their bad bullying behavior. People tried to cover for Councillor Baumgartner for his bullying behavior towards Councillor Franco. Now, Councillor Bordelain is trying to whitewash her bullying, intimidating behavior towards an inspector of Ledge, Ledge Light Health District. She stated she didn't scream. Well, after watching her the entire time she's been on this council, I find that hard to believe. She seems to have a short fuse, and if things don't go her way, there's always a spectacular, something spectacular to watch, no matter how embarrassing it is. These two are known for their bullying tactics. They seem to be working together, not for what's best for our town. They pat each other on the back no matter what the subject, and they vote together ninety-nine percent of the time. Time for the playground antics to end. Grow up. Behave like adults. You're both town councillors. You each have one vote. You are each one of nine. I find this embarrassing and beneath what I expect from our elected officials. If you're unhappy, just resign. I'd like to remind all of our elected officials that their behavior, good or bad, is a reflection on our town, whether it's inside or outside of your meetings. I'm not happy with the way our Town Council, as well as our representative town meeting, is, is looked at because of a few individuals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Roseanne Kautowski.
Thank you. Roseanne Kautowski, twenty-four Ann Avenue. Good evening. After hearing the Branford Manor residents, I hope the Town Council can give them the help they need. Their stories are just unbelievable. Good luck to all of you. Also, I support John Goodrich for the permanent position on the Historic District Commission. My comments tonight are regarding the Town of Groton Development Policy. I have been thinking about this for a long time, and I have touched on it when I've talked, spoken with the Town Council in the past. It is so unfortunate that the Town of Groton Development is driven by a policy of pro-development at all cost. As you know, the last three big projects that Town Staff pushed forward were overwhelmingly rejected by Groton residents, Mystic Oral School, Five Corners, and Data Centers. I do not agree with the Planning Department live-work-play-and-pro-development-at-all-costs policy that Town Staff is moving the town forward with. When I have discussed this with the Town Manager, he reminds me that the Town Staff pro-development-live-work-play policy is directed by the Town Council. Maybe not this Town Council, but that's where the direction came from. So that's what needs to change. The Town Council must redirect Town Staff to move forward with a reasonable development policy. Hopefully, the Town Council will be able to make that happen. Why is this important? No one asks the residents and taxpayers if this is the policy we want for our town. The live-work-play-pro-development-at-all-costs and every electric boat worker must live here is not reflective of what the residents support. The talking point to support these policies is we have to grow the grand list. To that, I propose the Town reduce spending instead. Every year that fund balance increases above fifteen percent, Every year that fund balance increases above 15% reflects the fact that the Town overtaxed the residents. Think about that for a minute. There are many areas in the budget that could be reduced. The Town Council just has to have the political will and courage to do it. Currently in Groton, there are very few single-family homes being constructed. The Town Manager stated at a recent meeting that there were seven new single-family starts last fiscal year. When there are no single-family and two-family dwellings constructed to create neighborhoods and only rental apartment buildings are constructed, there is no generational wealth for families being created. There is nothing for families to pass from one generation to the next. This is not pro-neighborhood, this is not pro-family, and this is not pro-Town of Groton. All of you possess real estate equity currently, or will in the future, or from your families. That is how it should be. There are several ways to change the Town pro-development-at-all-costs policy and redirect Town staff. The Town staff can simply tell the Town Manager to redirect the Town staff to a more reasonable development policy. The Town Council can put reasonable development policy on it as an agenda item, discuss it, and then redirect Town staff. The Town Council can hold a public hearing to get input from the residents regarding reasonable development, and then redirect Town staff. In my opinion, public outreach is not one night of putting silly little colored stickers on easel boards. It is obvious by the recent rejection of everything the Planning Department has pushed forward that the residents want reasonable developments, not data centers, not mega-developments, not unregulated short-term rentals. I hope you'll seriously consider my comments, especially regarding my concern that there are no new neighborhoods being created to help families achieve homeownership and the ability to pass along generational wealth. Homeownership is what will create generational wealth for Groton families, not apartments and data centers. Please support reasonable development in Groton and redirect Town staff to develop a new reasonable development policy moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Victoria Rodriguez.
Victoria Rodriguez, Building 35, Apartment 110, Brantford Avenue. I've been dealing with Brantford for so many years. I cannot believe how they have a disabled person with two little kids living the way she lives. This is not good. I still have paint all over that is chipping. I have a basement. I have a pipe that is about to break, and it's a black water pipe. How a disabled person is going to clean poop water on her basement? They even sealed one of my basement windows. How that humidity gonna get out if I can open that door? They even went outside the window and sealed that too. My bathroom is nasty. I don't have the mold that everyone has. All the paint is down. My shower, even my lawyer's step in there, is broken, and I'm still waiting for Brantford to come to my apartment. They might go to other apartments, but I'm still waiting for mine. I'm still waiting for an ADA handicap ramp since April. It's been approved. Now they can't fire a contractor. They have all this money, but they can take a minute to go ahead and pay the contractor to make myself a ramp. There's no lighting outside. I bring my son over to the bus every single morning. It's dark as hell. I could fall, there could be ice, and no one is doing nothing. I hear all this money that Brantford has? That's embarrassing. Someone needs to do something for these people to start moving. I want my apartment fixed. There's...even the stairs are bad. Everything in that apartment is bad. They don't go over to my apartment because they said it's one of the few that is decent. I can't imagine their apartment. If mine is decent and they don't get there, I can't believe their apartment. Apparently, they never go to their house. What does Brantford do from 8 to 5 they work now, 8 to 6, 9 to 7? What do they do? Just sit there, butt in the office and do paperwork? They need to get out of the office and go to every single apartment and start fixing these things. I have a lawyer, and I hope that with you guys, Brantford does something for us. I see all these things going on, and I'm surprised. Bathroom, floors, stairs, basements. If I don't bring Brantford to court back in 2016, they wouldn't have done anything ever in their life. And I'm there since 2007, 2008, and I've been dealing with Brantford all this time. So I hope you guys hear me out, because this is, having a disabled person like that is not fun. That's very disrespectful of everyone at Brantford Manor. And they're lucky that I haven't even called the cops on them yet. That will be my next step. Start making reports with the cops. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Genevieve Surf.
My name is Genevieve Surf. I live at 6 Pearl Street in Mystic. Good evening, councillors and Mr. Mayor. It is with a very heavy heart that I must yet again speak, unfortunately, not about the important, the really important issues which exist in our world and in our town, e.g., climate change and species extinction, income equality, inequality, unaffordable housing for people from whom we have just heard. But I must speak about the petty political and personal issues which continue to plague this council, especially since I consider myself a loyal Democrat and a believer in democratic policies. Most of the members of the Democratic Town Committees in this town and in the city, as well as the majority of these councillors, have been exhibiting behavior which is not only unbelievable but also heartbreaking for many of us in the party, including our highly-respected and awarded David Collins of the New London Day, who wrote about his own distress about it last year before our local elections. He also called himself a loyal Democrat who didn't know what to do with you guys. I'm writing this before the meeting, so I'm not entirely sure whether this will actually happen, but I've been told that from now on, there will be a police officer at the Town Council meetings. And of course, I do see the police officer. I thank you for your service, but I'm appalled that we are at the point, and this is like fake truth at its worst, we are at the point where we need a police officer in Groton Town Council meetings? You know, what are you guys up to exactly? It's just unbelievable. This is presumably because of the police report with Councilor Franco filed last spring, charging Councilor Baumgartner with harassment and scaring her. The police officer investigating this found nothing to substantiate this accusation, especially since it happened in front of all of us and on TV during a recess of a council meeting. And Councilor Franco did not choose to go public with this until just before the last election, presumably to hurt Andre's chances in his run for state rep. Fortunately, the voters saw through this and voted overwhelmingly for Andre. And now, the most astonishing thing. I have never seen a councillor's mother before the council making statements and accusing other councillors on a council with her daughter and telling the mayor how he should punish them for supposedly the things that they've done wrong, and this particularly Councilor Bordelain and Councilor Baumgartner. I mean, I, I, it's unbelievable. And if any of you people out there are voting, are watching, you voters and taxpayers, please let us know that, you know, just like they wanted a moderator a few weeks ago, that we were, a few months ago, that we were gonna have to pay, you know, I forget, like $100,000, like a huge amount of money to have a moderator attend these meetings because the councillors can't get along like a bunch of babies. Please speak up and let us know what you think, because it is outrageous. No offense to the police officer, whom I respect highly, or to the police in general in Groton, whom I think are doing a great job. I was at the fire last weekend, and they did a fantastic job protecting the town. So it's certainly nothing against our first responders. It's really what is causing this council to do this. Now, last week, a couple of weeks ago, I'm on the RTM, when I was on the RTM, again, Margie Gugens, Rachel's mother, came to the RTM and accused me of speaking illegally at the Town Council, which was completely wrong. It's an accusation which the RTM moderator, Jill Ross, corrected. I am allowed to speak at the Town Council, and she accused me of not being allowed to speak at the Town Council. I've only been doing this for 20 years, folks. And then she also accused me, basically, I didn't, I couldn't find the letter, it was supposed to be part of the permanent record, and I couldn't find it anywhere, so I'm gonna have to ask Betsy where it is. Basically, she accused me of being old and doddering and wandering in my speech. Now, I hope you don't find that I'm wandering in my speech tonight, because what I'm saying is really important. This has got to stop. This war against Portia and Andre has got to stop. And I'm really hoping that you all come to your collective senses and realize what harm you're doing.
Thank you.
I have a point of clarification.
Thank you.
Also, the Town Council meeting, the last Town Council meeting...
Your time has expired.
David Franco, Rachel's husband...
Your time has expired.
Thought that I was speaking, and he made a motion like this for me to zip it. And at the recess, I went up to him and I put my arm gently on his shoulder...
Mrs. Surf, your time has expired.
Representative Surf, can you hear me?
That it was my neighbor speaking, and he brushed my arm away like this, and he said, "Don't touch me. Don't you ever touch me like that." So I'd really like to know who's the more aggressive in this group here?
Thank you. If you have additional comments, you can submit them to the Town Clerk. Your time has expired. Thank you.
I thought I had one minute when you signaled. What happened to my minute?
Your time has expired. Thank you.
I have a point of clarification.
About big development, it's jealousy, and I also think it's racism. I'm just gonna call it up for what it is, and I really do hope you stop it.
Thank you.
I have a point of clarification.
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take that up at this time.
I have a point of clarification, which in the rules, I can ask a point of clarification. Is Jen Surf a representative of the RTM and an elected official as well?
Yes, she is. She stated she was. Next on my list, I have Kim Napier.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight to listen to us. I've been a resident, I've been a manager for about seven years now. I've been experiencing mold over my apartment for about two years. I've been complaining constantly, but nobody has to answer, nobody has been doing anything about it. It's been all over our walls. It's gone to the point it reached to our ceiling, and I bought a new AC to see if it would change anything. I got a couple of humidifiers. I invested so much money and time into figuring out if I can fix the problem when it should be their problem to be fixed. Recently, they, in October, the end of October, they have, they gave me a 24-hour notice to leave my apartment because they're gonna fix the mold redemption problem, moisture problem. So I've been in the hotel right now with my three kids for a month. No one has been communicating with me about anything. I've been calling and seeking answers because I work a lot. I work 60-plus hours. I have three jobs. So it's been a constant battle with trying to figure out and having to pinpoint the problem with everything. It has affected me financially, mentally, emotionally, just trying to find the answers for me and my kids to find a suitable, a place for us to live. I've been trying to find house, house outside of Brantford, and it's been hard for me to afford by myself alone. So I'm here just to represent for those who can't come tonight and say my matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just have her name and address again? I'm sorry.
Kim Napier. I didn't, that's her name. Did you say your address for the record?
111, Apartment 121.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on my list, I have James Furlong.
Good evening. My name is James Furlong. I live at 57 Fishtown Lane. I hadn't intended to speak tonight, but when I hear the same kind of stuff, nasty stuff being allowed to circulate here, I felt I had to speak. I think it's, as Jen says, it's rather appalling that we need to have a policeman here. I'm sure he's a fine policeman. And there may be a good reason for that, because we've been hearing time and time again the same sort of words that apply to a couple of members, like bullying and assault. These are really serious things to say. And I think perhaps having an honest policeman here to listen to what's going on may help dispel some of this, some of these, what Winston Churchill called terminological inexactitudes. He used that term because the real word was, was lies. And he was, he was told to rephrase it, and I rephrase it here. I think a lot of this stuff that's going on is, whether the, whether the purveyors of it or know it or not, they are certainly inexactitudes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Bunny Furlong.
Good evening again. Mary Ellen Furlong, 57 Fishtown Lane, Mystic. And once again, I'm out on a beautiful night after turning 80, so that I can watch the children in the playground. You, this is inexcusable. In New York City, when they had a woman constantly complaining about a gentleman in the park who happened to be black and accusing him of various things, they, the police investigated and found that Karen's complaint to be ridiculous, just as they did here in Groton. I don't really want to hear about this anymore. I also don't want to pay for a police officer. I don't think we need one. I also would like the Town Council to do what they're supposed to do. We have, once again, we've had little government by ambush. This, it is, the last thing is in regards to the Pfizer court case that was due to come up, which the Town knew about for months and months. This is not news, kids. And at the last minute, the Town Manager sent out an email to all of you who, you must have been notified to be looking for it, and said he needed direction by the next day. This is a complicated court case involving years of back taxes with Pfizer. There is no way that you could come up with a consensus on what to do. I don't think any of you have a back... I don't think any of you have a background in finance, well, one in finance, but the legalities of all of this, you don't. Once again, the town is being deprived of income that it probably should have. Once again, the town is being forced to pay lawyers and so on instead of having the money that the town should have. And then I had to listen to this laughable thing whereby we couldn't afford a splash pad because, oh dear, the taxes that we're, we're, have now are way too high. There again, every other year that we've had an assessment, the taxes have been spread over three years. But, oh, this year, gee, it came too fast, we just couldn't do it. This doesn't make any sense. And what I'm hearing is we're wasting time with this nonsense. The town is not being managed. And again, I will, I will agree with Roseanne. All the people on my street, their children have grown up, they've gone to college, they've gotten jobs. And what are they looking for now? A house in the area, a starter house, not more giant apartment buildings. They don't have anything to do with Groton. We might be able to have nicer stores and supermarkets that people wanna go to if we had our neighborhoods. Please listen to what the people in this town are saying, not the planning people.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Myrna Ortiz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Monerva Ortiz and I live in Branford, 270 Branford Avenue. I am here because I don't know where else to turn. In the last two and a half weeks, I have come home to strangers in my home, strangers. They're not from Branford, they're not maintenance from the community of Branford. These people are being brought here from somewhere else and my home doesn't feel like my home anymore. I don't even wanna get home from work because my, my home, I don't feel like it's my home. I got men coming in to my apartment, they have seen me naked because they just go in whenever they feel like it and if you call it the office, very apologetic about everything. I am so sorry, so sorry, so sorry. I don't know who's there, I don't know why they're there. I got five men in my home. Well, my daughter, who's 14 and under the spectrum, she comes home 10 minutes before I do from work and she came to a downstairs with five grown men and a lady shouting orders. She called me, I was on my way to work, I couldn't get to my home. I couldn't because I was so exasperated and so hopeless and so mad. I called my therapist and from there, I went to the ER. She called ambulance for me because of what's Branford doing to us. Nobody, nobody steps in. We're like corralled in this place where nobody listens to our plight. And when you call the, you call the, you call the administration's office, something's wrong, call the police. As soon as you call them, this is why they tell us. We can't do nothing. Branford is private. Over and over again. I don't understand this. We pay taxes. They benefit the police force. You're telling me in my country, I have no rights? I can come into my home and find men using my toilet and dirtying and... The other day, they went in, they went in at 8:30 in the morning, they disconnected my cameras downstairs. They were there all day, all day. The administrator doesn't know who was there and why. I have five men and a woman inside my home the whole day and you didn't even know? That's plainly dangerous. Like I said, I have a 14-year-old and they're just going to this place, these people, they come into our homes uninvited, like I said. It has happened multiple times that they have come in forcibly and they have found the female inside the apartment naked. It happened too many weeks ago. I know of other people, other women, single women, these men, they go in, they leave their... And you're telling me that because Branford's private and this is a civil case, we can't get help? We can't get them to listen to us? We pay rent. Not 25, I pay almost a thousand dollar, it's a mortgage. Yes, you might ask, why do you stay there? I'm 60 and she's 14. At my age, do you really think that I can go and, and work for another 20 years to pay for a house? I can't. I wish I could have another place to go and I would leave Branford. These people, they treat us like maggots. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've reached the end of my list. If there's anyone else present who would like to speak, please approach the podium at this time and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Ian Thomas. 24 Jefferson Drive. I am an RTM member, District 3. I'm also a member of the Rules and Procedures Committee, Public Safety Committee. I'm also on the Groton City Democratic Committee and the Groton Town Democratic Committee. I'm the middle child of five, I'm a Gemini, and my first car was a Mitsubishi Sapporo. First, some housekeeping. In regards to the notes on the draft minutes, under the descriptions of citizens petitions, I would ask that the clerk make the following corrections. Or if such suggestions coming from a community member is not allowable, then I would ask one of my elected representatives on the town council to recommend these changes that I'm about to describe. Number seven currently reads, Natalie Billing, 15 Ashby Street, offered constructive criticism and helpful suggestions regarding the proposed amendments to the town council rules. The use of the adjectives constructive and helpful are not consistent with the tone and tenor of the rest of the descriptions of citizens petitions. I recommend simply eliminating those adjectives. So it reads, offered criticism and suggestions regarding proposed amendments. Number 2, 3, and 8 all include the phrase saying speaker's statement was included with permanent record of the meeting. However, the description of my comments, which I did submit to all of you via email and the town clerk and the town manager with the explicit request of it being included in the permanent record, did not have this sentence attached to it. So I would like that sentence attached to the minutes saying that it is part of the permanent record and then I'd like to see it part of the permanent record. Now, I am here on behalf of the residents of Branford. You've heard the details going on. As you all know, I've been here a number of times speaking on this issue and from the beginning, I was advocating for a comprehensive L-Plex by L-Plex plan of extreme remediation, pretty much gutting down to the timbers and rebuilding what they should have done five years ago. But they didn't. And now we're here, compounding problems. And I commend you all for voting for default over 30 days ago. It's a 30-day default period. And I'm still waiting to hear the report. I've seen some of the updates given by the town manager and town manager's report, but they rarely expound beyond anything, beyond like a PR statement from Related Affordable saying all the things they're doing, but I don't see any statistics. I don't see anything coming from Legelight. If there's been extensions to the default period, then we need to know how that was achieved and why. We need to see explanations and evidence, just like any other argumentative essay should have evidence and explanation. This has not come forth from Legelight Health District, which I have a lot of respect for that organization, but they're kind of failing at this point. I'm not seeing the transparency, I'm not seeing the information. Where are the spreadsheets? I've talked to a number of residents and they're sharing these horror stories of, of this ordeal, those that are there, those that have been displaced. What do you think retaliation looks like? Do you think you're gonna find it in the email? Do you think you're gonna find direct, you know, communication saying, "Go get 'em"? No, it's negligence. It's callousness, carelessness, disrespect. That's what retaliation looks like. That's what's happening here. And I would love to see a spreadsheet of all the residents who have a lawyer or have representation and what their current situation is and their status of resolution versus those who do not. And I also like to see the names on that list to see how many of them, how many of tenants with lawyers are feeling the pain worse than the tenants maybe who don't have lawyers and who are not getting work done and who have not complained. Think about it. I mean, it, it's not rocket science, just, you know. Use your common sense. Related Affordable is a national company. They have properties in Massachusetts, they have properties in Chicago, they have properties in San Francisco, all of which are having similar problems or have had similar problems and similar fallout, similar abuse of tenants, similar negligence, similar squirreling away of public money. Please, do something. When's the report? When's the agenda item?
Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak at this time? Just name your name and address for the record.
Dave Franco, Mystic. May I speak to you tonight about the ongoing issue that I see coming from elected officials in our community? Lies, intimidation, harassment, bullying, extremism, spinning the facts, yelling, grandstanding, taking over people, rudely interrupting, being bullied and playing the victim. It's exhausting. I'm tired of watching it. It's an embarrassment, really are. It's an embarrassment to, to the council in our community. You just don't have the right to intimidate anyone, not your fellow councillor, town staff, employees, outside agencies. We've heard about Councillor Baumgartner harassing my wife, we all heard about it, we all know it, yep. But you know what? I gotta come here and sit here and watch because you know what? Let me see somebody else's wife get chased around a room for 20 minutes and see what their husband does. I'm sorry, just coming to do that. You can say what you want over there, but that's fine. I'm speaking now. I'm, I'm speaking now. I didn't interrupt you. Did I, did I interrupt you? Because I don't think I did. You heard about Councillor Borlon trying to antagonize other councillors in fights during council breaks? I was there, I saw it, trying to deny it.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't get the speaker's name and address. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I said my name's Dave Franco from Mystic.
No, what, I need an address? I'm sorry, Mr. Franco.
I don't need to give you my address, I could just tell you.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not there in the meeting, I don't have the paper in front of me, I'm taking notes from outside of the meeting, I'm sorry. What's your address?
Mystic, Connecticut.
No, no, no. How's, how's the address? It, it's just part of FOI, I'm sorry.
FOI states you don't have to put your full address, it's requested, but it's...
It's only, it's only actually, it, it's only when somebody's in a meeting, someone who speaks must state their name and address. FOI requires...
I don't know about that because last meeting I was at, there was somebody from San Francisco that was here, so they didn't give their address.
Okay, you know, that's fine. You know, if you wanna be this way, that's fine. I, it's part of the problem.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it. So now I'll continue. You heard about the Councillor Borlon trying to antagonize councillors in fights during council breaks. Now we're hearing about Councillor Borlon bullying Legelight Health District inspectors while she was simply doing her job. And Councillor Borlon was trying to sway a regulation inspection. It's just nonsense. Neither of you have apologized though, I'm sure you're full of excuses, know this, there's no excuse for your behavior. On the other hand, I've been coming to the last five meetings due to the increased volatility issues playing out in these town council meetings. At the last meeting, I was approached by three elected officials who received response from me, they scoffed and then played the victim. You know who you are, elected officials, they verbally attacked my wife and isn't elected official, Councillor Franco. They've done this on numerous occasions, then they decided to approach me at a public meetings, people are, are instigators, they're bullies, and then they play victim. These people don't belong in politics. They belong in the theater, better yet, nowhere, anywhere near in the public. It's honestly appalling. I wish, I will, I will share what I said to the people about the bully victims, the snowflakes. Representative Ian Thomas, keep your wife's name out of my mouth and off your fingertips. Representative Jen Surff, she touched me as she stated earlier, nah, chains off me, don't ever touch me again. And Republican Town Committee Vice Chair John Gertrich, the mind is business about getting involved in nothing that you need to be involved in. I'm not an elected official, I should have the right to come to a public meeting without these people approaching me and trying to instigate me. You should, you should all take a seat, stop the madness that's happening at these meetings and for the record, don't approach me, don't speak to me. So here we are, now there's a police officer stationed at our meeting, which I'm sure has other things to do than to babysit here, the horrible behavior and numerous elected officials are the troublemakers who are all associated with Baumgartner and Borlon. If you cannot behave yourself in a dignified manner, then step down. Please do us all a favor. Councillor Borlon, to you and your spouse, you are not the heroes of Groton, you seem to think you are, you are an ever-growing embarrassment. You're also the loudest person in the room, which is a sign of showing the weakest in the room. Everyone sees you who you appear to be, few experience who you really are. Thanks. Do you need this?
Thank you. Will anyone else wish to speak at this time? I don't see anyone else online. So with that, I'll close receipt of citizens petitions.
Request a recess.
We'll recess for 10 minutes and be back at 7:50.
Thank you.
We're back from recess at seven fifty-two. And as a note, Council Parker has joined us at seven fifty-two. Onto the consent calendar. I make a motion moving the consent calendar consisting of the November first, 2022 town council meeting minutes and the special trust fund contributions from November. So moved.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones.
I have a question. So that's also including page five, right, of the minutes?
Includes all the minutes.
Yeah, so I'd just like to make the addition that any person who submitted a comments for the record that it also should say permanent record.
Okay.
And it shouldn't just be.
Just to let you know, Council Borlon, everything is included in the permanent record.
It's just, it can be a little deceiving the way it's written where some say it and others don't. That's all. So I guess if they're all going to be included, then everyone should just not say it. So then maybe strike the ones that say will be included in the permanent record. If that's a given.
Everything's in.
Council McBride?
Yes, thank you. I just have a question. Maybe it's a clarifying question for Clerk McCauser. In the minutes, oftentimes there's a box, which is easily understood because it displays the votes and who voted yes or no for each item. But it's only on certain occasions and there's many times when we did vote that the box isn't there. And I'm just wondering, is there a determination on when the box is utilized versus the paragraph format? Just because as a resident, I think it's easier to see where each counselor votes when it is displayed in the box.
Right, so when you have an item that's listed on your agenda that is expecting a vote, the program that we have, our software program, will make a box for the vote. But if you make different votes within that item, which this is what you're alluding to, then you'll only see a written explanation of who voted which way. You know, the actual motion, who seconded, who voted yes, who voted no. It won't be in a box because I don't have it anyway. This is not a real legislative program like we've had in the past that I could actually record history and actual vote. It'll only be written. So this is a different type of program that we have right now. We've had it for about five years. And I agree with you. It's a little confusing for anyone who's looking for the box. But we're not going to have a box only with the actual item that's listed in the agenda. So you'll have one, an item number. That number will have an actual box. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, no, it makes sense. I see. It's the predetermined votes get the box. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay, I guess maybe for this council to consider if we could just put, you know, a bold vote maybe in the future? Because I think, I think with residents.
I can't do much about that, but I can suggest that we consider discussing a different program. It's different software. It would be economical also, change.
Okay, just a thought for the council to consider because I think residents do like to see where people voted and the box to make it easy.
I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands, I'll call for a vote on favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining? Onto communications and reports. Council Baumgartner.
Good evening, everyone. It has been very busy last couple of weeks. Hope everyone enjoyed their break, spending time with family, refueling, getting ready for the new year and enjoying your holiday. Now also a married man. And just again, I think everyone for, you know, just making, I think this year a very special year. So with that, plenty of meetings also in the district. I'm sorry, in the town last few weeks. But again, hope everyone had a nice holiday break. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Parker. Council Parker, we're, we can't hear you. You are unmuted, so I don't know if you're speaking.
I think we lost her.
She says she's connecting the audio.
Yeah, she's got a problem with her connection.
Okay.
Why don't you wait and go back to videos?
Okay, we'll circle back. Council Franco?
I'm not going to report this time.
Thank you. Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Received various emails from concerning different issues that came through. Also in this past week, we had the Trails Coordinating Task Force meeting with Director Berry, just learning where all the different trail systems are at this stage. And the only sort of thing that we've been concerned about was the signs that have been stolen. Groton Open Space lost three signs and the town of Groton, I think, lost one sign. Somebody has been stealing the map signs at the different properties. So it's a little concerning and those are expensive to replace them and to put them back up. And it's also discouraging just because this is a huge asset that the town has and people are stealing the signs and we're not sure what they're doing with them. Other than that, I think that's, that's it.
Thank you. Council McBride?
Thank you. Not much to report. I did attend the EDC meeting, Economic Development Commission, last Thursday. It was a good meeting. Other than that, just received a lot of communication on various matters, but most importantly, a lot of communication on the Property Reuse Committee. And I did want to let everybody know, we do host those meetings, the first and third of every month. We'll be hosting one tomorrow. The committee did a lot of work last meeting that we had, I think it was two or three weeks ago. And there's a wealth of information to review. So if anyone has any comments, please take a look and provide them so we can make as many comments as possible. I did want to thank the three members who have joined and provided a great deal of help. Bob Frank from the Groton Housing Authority, Halsad from Planning and Zoning, and Larry Dunn from the Conservation Commission. They've been very helpful at making changes that I know myself wasn't capable of making them because they're really specific to land matters. So I wanted to thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Council Borlon?
Yes, thank you. I received emails just regarding different things with Brantford as well as other concerns in the town about the signs. I also received an FOI request from the town manager, from the former counselor Conrad Heed, requesting the FOI of the Legelite health complaint, the one that was stated here at the council that, you know, a counselor was aware of before the actual person that the letter was about, meaning myself. So I did receive communications from the day paper asking for a statement for the article. And I did receive a lot of communications from people in the community. I did receive one from the mother of the unit in which we were inspecting on the date of the actual so-called incident that's being projected as such. It was myself, the mother of the woman who had passed, her sister, and another neighbor named Val standing there when this so alleged incident happened. And as it stated, the mother, it stated in the report. I also have the long extension report, which I emailed to all the counselors and to the town manager. But basically she would like me to read part of this that was sent. It says to whom it may concern, and I apologize, it's in her writing and language off her email, not mine. My name is Maria Torres and I'm writing a letter concerning the injustice being held against Portia Borlon. Now again, this was the mother who was standing there of the apartment that we were touring. I do not understand why Portia is being targeted this way when this woman has a heart of gold and is a very kind person. Never have I heard her screaming or even being aggressive against anyone while she was at my presence. The apartment that the health department inspector went to see was my deceased daughter's apartment. She died while living in the apartment. And the presence of the black mold could have contributed to her immune system becoming therefore compromised, compromising my ability and capability of fighting off the simple bacteria. I was staying in the same apartment building, building eighteen, one fifty-five, since August twenty eighth, 2022, till most, almost the mid-October. In that time period, I developed asthma and had a hard time breathing, working up, waking up every day, every morning with a headache. This apartment wrecked, reeked of a heart, a horrible smell of black mold. But me and my sister and my grandson had no choice to stay there while we emptied and cleaned out the apartment. We had to wait for the moving pod and my daughter's ashes before we could leave. My home in Florida is not Connecticut. My home is in Florida, not Connecticut. I was also, I was, I was only there because of my daughter's health condition. During my time there, my daughter's body couldn't fight anymore and she succumbed to what, whatever was attacking her body on September tenth, 2022. Her death is now under investigation. She was, she was always complaining about coughing, getting sick, but couldn't figure out why when she was always a healthy young woman. That's when I contacted the lawyer in charge of Brantford Manor tenants lawsuit. And that's when the media, health department, mayor and others got involved in inspecting my daughter's apartment. The first mediators that checked, mediators that checked the wall found, the meters that checked the wall found almost, found almost a lot of moisture behind the walls. The air quality inspector found the highest mold concentrating in the air and very bad air quality in that apartment. It was so bad that that day, Portia, the health, the day that Portia, sorry, I lost my spot here. Portia, the Health Department Inspector, and the mayor, and his team members came. The mayor's team members had to step outside because their throats started reacting to the smell of the mold in the apartment. And mind me that we have all the windows always open except at night. I was present when all the things were going on, and so was my sister Iris. At no given point did we see or heard Portia acting in any way disrespectful or aggressive towards anyone there, especially the lady from the Health Department. We were actually all there in a semicircle while Portia was asking this lady that can, can there be something else done to check for mold behind the walls in the apartment?
Councilor Bordelon, your time has expired?
Do we have time limits on this?
Yes.
That's never been, we've always been able to read?
You've started three minutes. You can submit that for the, I believe that's already on the record.
No, this one's not, so I just emailed it today. That's fine. And I just want to also say that I have one from Iris, who's the aunt that was there, as well as Valerie, who was the other person standing in the semicircle, in relation to this alleged, you know, misrepresentation of myself with one alleged light health district's complaint. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll submit them. Who's collecting all the files?
I will do so.
I can email them to Betsy if that's easier. Perfect.
Councilor Westerveld?
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to point out that I did receive many emails on various different topics, including, and most disconcerting, is the way we are being perceived as a town council. It's kind of distressing, and once again tonight, we see it front and center again. So I've gotten those emails. I'd also, on a lighter note, I'd like to point out that the Eastern Connecticut Symphony Youth Orchestra performed during the dinner at Thrive Fifty-Five last Monday. They were invited over and they provided some orchestral music while the people were having their dinners over at Thrive Fifty-Five. Also, my daughter, who is an alum at Fitch, they've had, she plays rugby for the U.S. Coast Guard right now. And I just want to give a shout out to the Coast Guard Women's Rugby Team. They finished first in the New England Regionals, and they went on to the national championships down in North Carolina this past weekend, where they beat Colorado School of Mines in the semifinal match and matched up against Vassar. They unfortunately lost, but they did place second in a very, very strong match. So the, I just wanted to give a shout out to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Chrisery?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I wanted to send a heartfelt thank you and commend all of our local fire, EMS, police, first responders, and the Salvation Army who responded to the fire at Seaport Marine. Many of our own Groton fire personnel responded, entered nearby homes to ensure evacuation, and spent the night ensuring the fire was suppressed and didn't spread. I'm also sending thoughts to downtown Mystic and our neighboring Stonington Community. Fires are tragedies that all community members suffer from. Saturday, I attended the Groton Holiday Kickoff at Thrive Fifty-Five. My daughter's Girl Scout troop kicked off the event by singing Christmas carols, and then we were greeted by Santa and Officer Chase. Thank you to Thrive Fifty-Five staff and volunteers, especially Tomy, for hosting a fun, family-friendly event for our community. The Town of Groton Police Department is partnering with the Mystic Marriott tomorrow. Drop off a new unwrapped toy at the Marriott on North Road tomorrow morning from seven-thirty to nine-thirty, and receive a complimentary Starbucks coffee. And if you miss the drop-off tomorrow, you can still drop off an unwrapped toy until the twelfth of December. The Town of Groton Police Department also announced a Citizens Police Academy, which we had talked about in the Citizen and Police Committee. They are currently accepting applications, and I would highly recommend attending a Citizen Police Academy if you are interested in learning about what police actually do and how they do it. And you can contact Officer Heather McClelland or Officer Mitch Chapman if you're interested in doing so. I received various communications regarding Brantford Manor, Laurelwood, Mystic Education Center, Property Reuse Committee, Essential Workers, Parks and Rec Master Plan, FOIA Concerns, Eastern Connecticut Corridor Rail and Train Feasibility Study Assessment Appeal Process, CT Index, Legislative Updates for our December thirteenth COW meeting, privately owned signs on the town's right-of-ways being reimbursed, police at council meetings, and the class action lawsuit involving Brantford Manor tenants. I also watched the Town Council Personnel and Appointments Meeting and the Property Reuse Committee Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Chrisery took the words right out of my mouth. I too want to thank the first responders to that horrendous fire. I was relieved to find that no one was injured in the fire, and it's no doubt due to your good work. Also, I attended the Holiday Kickoff at Thrive Fifty-Five. I just want to thank Tomy and also all of the volunteers at Thrive Fifty-Five, as that is sort of an event that they put on. It was well-attended. The tree lighting was great, and it was just another success for those volunteers and all the work that they do all year. Onto Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting?
You were going to go back to Parker?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Parker?
Please, please, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I use computer. I'm trying to connect. So I attended the Duck and Donuts reopening on Route Twelve. Spaghetti dinner that was hosted by Groton Middle School. I stopped by Robotic Breakfast. And Holiday Kickoff, and I attended the TVCCA meeting this evening, as well as receiving numerous emails that Councilor Chrisery presented. Can I follow up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to just bring the communication of the Pfizer thing that was sent in the email that needed a consensus?
What do you mean?
John Burt had sent the ASAP recommendation for...
What are you, what are you asking?
That's a communication, so how do we, how should we note that?
We're going to get to the town manager in just a moment. We just have a couple more things before him.
All right. I just want to say that was another email that we received that we had to do a consensus vote.
Thank you. Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting?
Okay, the Town Council, RTM, has a meeting coming up here on the fourteenth. And we still have districts one and four representatives, Democratic representatives, we need to fill. If you know of anyone, or if anyone listening is interested, is a Democrat, living in District One, voting District, District Three, voting District, please contact my office. And that's about it for it.
Clerk of the Council?
For the Town Council, we had an excellent election for the state offices. No glitches whatsoever. It went really well, even with the additional absentee ballots, over seventeen hundred ballots, so you should be very, very confident that we can handle anything.
Thank you. Onto committee reports. I have nothing from committee at all. Chair Baumgartner, personal appointments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know this evening, we will be, so I think this is the first council meeting where we will officially have the change in the process of how we vote. Typically, I give these committee reports, so to speak, or, I'm sorry, after the vote as personnel committee vote, it usually takes place, or has taken place, on the consent calendar. So this evening, we will be voting on a bulk, primarily a bulk of reapportments, as well as appointments to the committee. And Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go through that list?
It's certainly not necessary, but if you wish to do so, you could.
All right. I wasn't sure if it would be more appropriate to do that during the committee vote, but...
Yeah, perhaps it would be.
All right, so I'll wait for the committee vote then.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Onto rules. Chair Parker?
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Public Safety Chair McBride?
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Onto new business?
Point of clarification, is the town manager going to give a report?
There is no, that is not on the agenda, no.
Could we ask questions at that time? Because that's usually under that section.
That's correct.
Town Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mayor. I understand that our town manager is indisposed. He is attending, but he cannot give a report at this time.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Onto new business, ARPA Fund update application review. We should have Director Reiner here, and also Kevin Fitzgerald, I believe.
Good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So quickly, wanted to talk tonight about the ARPA process. And really, I think the biggest focus that we want to have moving forward is, you know, as we discussed, what is the best way to get through all these applications? Some of the feedback from the council, I think we really are looking at, you know, we put a memo together looking at a few or a number of different options. I think really the most critical option for us to move forward with is getting some basic questions out to the, all of the applicants that we've had thus far, of all fifty-four applicants, looking at, again, within that referral, some of those on the feasibility of their proposals if they did or did not receive full funding, and also looking into whether or not they had sought after any other additional funding options for the project. So those are some of the bigger things that we're looking at. I think the council members probably have thought about this a little bit, how we could best get additional information or interviewing twenty or all fifty-four people would take a substantial amount of time. So happy to answer any questions that the council might have, looking at process. But really, I think our next best step is to get some questions out, diving a little bit deeper into these applications, and then to probably have a COW in the future sometime in January to really dive in and move forward.
Okay, thank you. So you're looking today for some direction on how to proceed, how the process is, how are we going to make this decision?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if any council members have any, you know, we had proposed some draft questions there that we can put out if people have any feedback on that, either now or offline, that's totally fine.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I would want to talk about a little bit is a fifth option on here. And over the last week, I've spent quite a bit of time going through all of the data and working, one of my daughters is an actuary for one of the large insurance companies. So we took all the data from the packet and basically broke it down and built some spreadsheet model that we can use for councillors to determine where they might like choices made. You give me a minute here, and I'll show it to you. And thought it might just be able to give us the ability to, kind of, every councillor to go through and... And you'll have to excuse me, I'm a Mac person, not a PC person. And so this was something, we took all the data, we, from these sheets that we have in our packet, plus all of the fifty-two different packet, fifty-two summary sheets, and put it together into a spreadsheet that will allow people to kind of go through and do what-if scenarios. And it's basically set up with the name of the project, the applicant, the project number, which relates to the fifty-two sheets, a percentage of the initial amount they requested, a percentage of that in the whole package. This is the column that Director Reiner will give us some information on, which is the partial funding column. We didn't have this, and there were some indications in the, on the fifty-two sheets or the summary sheet. But this would be great to have this information. Then we have a column here in orange that you can add in what you feel is the amount of money that you want to put into this project. And this column, I'll just do a sample here, can give you a running total. So I'm just going to put, just randomly picking something, and I can just put several numbers in here.
Are you sharing a screen?
I may not be. Let's see here.
So maybe, Mayor, I don't know if we're ready for this, but maybe this is more for a COW? Meeting, you know, committee meeting?
We just, let me just kind of run through this. Mr. Really, we'll get it to share.
All right, Mayor, I'm just, I'm very confused.
Yes.
For a minute, you know, for the meeting.
Yeah, I believe he's, he's proposing that each councillor submits their own, as a process, each councillor submits their own, I guess, quote-unquote, budget, and then come prepared to the COW that we are to discuss this, so we can have raw numbers to work with.
Exactly, right. So every council gets a choice of picking the kind of programs they want, where they think the money should be spread. It will give you a running total of the money that you have, which bottoms out at the $2,495,000 number. So it just gives us a way of everybody going through and sort of making their choices of what they might like and helping with their thinking in terms of preparing for the eventual COW where we do sit and sort of discuss. It also has built into it a percent calculator, and I can go into more detail with anybody that wants to know more about it. But it just gives us a tool, and everybody can have a unique spreadsheet or unique worksheet to kind of do their own analysis of the programs. So looking at the proposals that's in here, one of the requests that's in here is having interviews with all the different participants. And I think, to me, it seems we have all of the information that we kind of need in the packets. I think the planning department and Kevin did a fantastic job of putting that together. So if the consent of people here is to have this, I can send our unique one to every single councillor, and it gives them a tool to kind of do their thinking on how it fits into the budget numbers that we have.
Thank you. Councilor Franco?
Thank you. So I like this idea, and Councilor Jones had shared with me that he had come up with this spreadsheet kind of idea. And with that, I had sort of jumped off and thought that maybe we should come up with some kind of criteria as to what would help us decide some of these items. And as a whole, maybe there are things that we should decide, such as should we remove out-of-town items, because that was discussed before. So that may be, like, if we take those off, that's easily some that we take off. Remove, potentially, remove school items, as from what I've understood, they've received their own ARPA funding. There are, and potentially, businesses that do not need stabilization money. Maybe we put that money into the EDC fund, because at the EDC, they have an Economic Development Fund, and we have approved many of those through the council, where businesses go to them, have an application, and then they go through the application thoroughly and award money to businesses. Potentially remove the broadband request, because the state is providing grants for people who want broadband for their communities, and their purse is much larger than ours for those topics. Partially funded, I'm sorry, and potentially put along some money for premium pay, and potentially for the first responders, as well as town employees who worked through COVID and really put themselves out there, regardless of the application that they had, if they had submitted, because I had heard some people were told, and I don't know exactly, but that they... but that they didn't need to submit an application for the premium pay and that, you know, so I think we should take them into consideration and potentially do a lump sum for first responders and staffing. And with all that, if possible, if we could have maybe a special meeting, and where we work on just this topic alone, and where we sit at a table instead of up here, and we sit together as a group and really just try and tackle this together as, like a working group. And if we all come prepared and maybe come with some criteria that we all would, you know, that's important to each individual counselor. And then we throw it on the table and see where we can go from there, and then create a worksheet that, see where most everybody stands on some of the topics. And I think we can alleviate some of them very quickly and fund some of the rest of them. Or even make it so that there's a max on how much we give out to any individual request. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I agree with both of the counselors' comments in terms of moving forward. I just like to think of it as phases, because I think what Counselor Franco was talking about is like what I would consider Phase Two, in terms of finalizing and refining. And then Counselor, Counselor Jones is more of, actually like a Phase Three, because it's really dialing out the details. What I think we talked about last time, and I'm reading my notes from our last meeting at the COW, was I thought we were talking about developing like a Phase One, where we would take the $3 million or so available funds that are left, and we were going to break them down into the six categories: Human Services, Parks and Rec, Economic Development, Infrastructure, Premium Pay Admin, and Arts and Culture. And we were going to determine as a council, make a recommendation on what we thought those $3 million should go into those six buckets. So that's the way I thought we were proceeding, I thought it made sense. So I just wanted to give those comments, and I thought we left that meeting. As we were going to initiate that process, and then we're going to fine-tune it further based upon what the counselors have already recommended. So that was my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Counselor Jones' proposal is a great idea, and I think it works in with what Counselor Franco is suggesting. And we can kind of prioritize what we each want as a counselor, and then we come to the table and then can decide what our priorities are. I think it's a great idea. One of the things that I do think that maybe we need answered from the applicants is if they can fulfill their proposals with 100% of their ask, or if, you know, they could do something with 50% or 75%. I think that's one of the things that maybe would be beneficial for us, using this worksheet to make some decisions. And also, kind of just to piggyback off of what Counselor McBride just stated, the buckets were more of a guideline. Is that a fair way of looking at that?
I think it was guidance that we were seeking from the community on how the money should be spent. So that was certainly a guideline that the council and Long Term Recovery Committee used in moving the initial estimates forward.
Great, but we're not held to the buckets, correct?
The council can spend the money. I mean, really, it's how you and then, you know, the RTM gets, you know, a review of how the end result is. But that was really set by you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We just can't see any hands online because of the thing.
Ah. Thank you. Counselor Borlon?
I guess for me, like, it would be great, it's nice, thanks for putting the time and effort. And, you know, there has been some communication with some counselors about your spreadsheet. It'd be nice if you could email it out, you know, ahead of time, so that it could be, you know, just discussion here and not having it directly in front of me and only up on the screen, it's hard to kind of really.
You have it.
When did it come?
This afternoon, I've only finished it, no.
Oh, yeah, no, but for me, a person who works till four, I don't have it yet. I went home and had dinner and I haven't had a chance to check my town email, so.
Just, I'm sorry, I just have to say, thank you, Counselor Jones, for putting in all the work doing this, regardless of the time that it came through. Counselor Borlon?
I was just responding to him because I didn't have it yet, so, thank you. So if it's there and it came this afternoon, that's great. Unfortunately, I just haven't had a chance to check it yet. So to me, I'm not in receipt of it yet, because I haven't had a chance to review it for this meeting. But it doesn't just credit your work and effort, it's just, all right. So with that, I haven't really had a chance to fully vet it and look at it yet. I just need more time to do such. I, that would be a little bit more helpful if we could, you know, take time before making an action item on something I haven't been able to review in its entirety. So that would be my only hesitation. I think it looks like it's a great spreadsheet that could be utilized. But I do think it's very important that we look at these, and there are some outside resources that don't, aren't in our town, that do provide service to our town, just because they're not located here. And I just want to be very careful with eliminating certain things. And also want to make sure that we're sticking to the goals of what the ARPA money was meant to do, and looking at how we allocate that. I know during our budget season, it was the direction of some counselors to allocate some of that money right away as part of the budget. And that's why we're left with what we have now. And there was no chance to really kind of go through that. So I do think some, as I stated at the last meeting, we need to have some roundtable discussion. I do think and hope, I guess my question to ask is, have we reached out to any of these outside agencies yet to have them come present?
We have not reached out to the outside agencies yet.
Okay. Just, just to clarify for what's going on here. We are actually deciding on how we're going to move forward, so whether we're going to ask them to create a, there's options in here. Whether we're going to ask them, submit a questionnaire so they can submit the answers, whether we're going to have them submit a video presentation to us. That's what we're deciding now, is how we're going to reach out to them to give us additional information.
Thank you for clarifying that, I was aware. I was just asking, have we let them know that we're creating? It's sometimes good to let the agencies know that that's going to be the next step of some sort. So, since, in other, in past times when we've had presentations, reaching out to them, we didn't get as much of a turnout. So I just was hoping that we had started that process to engage. But I just don't think it's fair to discredit the work of the, you know, what, you know, some of the members have done on the committee that's met a lot, as was stated by the town manager last time. The outcome at the time, when the way that the data sheet was given to us, we had no way to add money in there. It was just, like, based on what was presented. So having the dollar amounts on there could have changed the outcome, which those options were not on there. So I do think that we need to find a collaborative way to sit down and have a special meeting and go through these. But not to, you know, lag any time and make sure that the outside resources are coming in early on and are scheduled in a way to vet what they're looking for and ready to speak to the amount and numbers if, in fact, you know, they are looking, if we decide to decrease by maybe only giving 25% of the ask versus 100%. So I think that those actions should start sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll take my first time. Just want to say thank you to Counselor Jones for putting in all this extra work. I think it'll be very helpful, I think it's very user-friendly. I planned, I was planning on coming to our COW on this with my own budget proposal. And this, this is just going to make it a whole lot easier to produce. So I'm going to thank you for that. I encourage all the other counselors to come with their own recommended list as well, so then we can have numbers and we can compare and sort of maybe take averages on, and come to a consensus that way. The other thing is, with the options laid out in front of us, I'm particularly fond of Option Four, and I'll tell you why. And that's the Video Project One. And here, I think, I think I read it implies that we may watch the videos during the meeting. I think actually, those videos should be produced and then put on the town website. Counselors can watch that before the meeting and come prepared, have watched them all. And the community can have watched them all. And that way, we come to the meeting, have already watched all the meetings, so it doesn't take any meeting time. I think if we do it that way, it's the most efficient for the meeting, and I also think it brings the most information. And as for the questions, I don't have any problems with any of these recommended questions here. I think we should, one thing I would really like to know from each applicant is how much they could do the project with in terms of, like, partial funding. I know what they requested, but is there a number where, under that dollar amount, they can't do the project anymore? And perhaps they wouldn't want to tell us that number, but I think that information would be very helpful. Because if we can use partial funding, we may be able to get more than just 20 of the projects done. We may be able to get a large number of those done than if we're just fully funding all these projects. So that's how I feel about that. Any other counselors wish to speak? Counselor McBride?
Yeah, I just want to clarify some things. The buckets I'm talking about isn't something I came up with. As Kevin knows, the IRS guidelines and the spreadsheet that is put together has seven exact categories of those categories that we're putting together. So this is something new. If we were to take, in essence, Counselor Jones' spreadsheet and put all those into these categories, that is exactly the duplication that Kevin has to submit every quarter. So it's nothing new, it's what the IRS requires. It's what every government municipality throughout the country is doing. So it's nothing new. It's a way you can report back to your residents by the categories that the IRS requires us to submit quarterly. So I think it should be done that way. I also am supportive of moving that in that direction. And then as Phase Two and Phase Three comes in, we do bring those applicants in for presentations. I think once the money is allocated by those IRS categories, then we know the amounts we have for each, whether it's Health and Human Services, whether it's Parks and Rec. We then know the amounts we can allocate to the $3 million that's remaining. And then we choose to bring in those applicants and they pitch to us what we want. And, you know, we review them at that point in time. That's, that would be my recommendation, I have some experience doing it. So I would, I would like to move forward with that and discuss it at the COW.
I just had a point of clarification really quick to.
What was your point of clarification?
I just wanted, so what option are you stating, Counselor McBride, that you're going with?
Well, I, like, Option Three. I think applicants should be present, they should come forward with all their information, just like we do any other proposal, any other budget matters. The group comes in front of us and pitches what they, why they think the money should be spent.
And then you said then the Counselor Franco's and Jones would be like a phase, the phases after that.
No, I think we as a council come up with a summary.
Yep.
By categories, and then we utilize Counselor Franco, what she presented in terms of really fine-tuning and, you know, moving this one out. You know, the ones that we as a council think we shouldn't have in that category, she mentioned out-of-town items, we remove them out. And then I think we use Counselor Jones' recommendation, because that gets into the details. And then we invite them into the public, invite them to our meetings and review and have them pitch those.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to answer Counselor McBride's. So in this spreadsheet, we actually added in those seven buckets. They're in here in Column H, so all the seven buckets are in here.
So they'd be summarized?
So they'd be summarized, and so now what I'll do, now that, I'm basically looking at feedback for today. So I'm going to go back and I'll figure out, we'll figure out how to chart that. So as you're doing options and figuring things out, you'll see the target numbers of the original buckets and where you sort of stand with.
That's great.
We built it in here, just, I just didn't know to put that in. So I'll figure out how to do that and put that in here. And I like, just to go off a little bit on what Counselor Franco talked about, it's just sort of coming up with your own sort of philosophy of how you want to move through this, some set of criteria, so you're kind of using that as you kind of go. You're like, this thing, they're out of town, they're in town, they're working with the resident, whatever it is, you just sort of have, just develop your own set of criteria as you kind of go through and fill out the chart. But it's just basically to help summarize, so you're not having scraps of paper and trying to figure it out, it just gives you a tool that you can get a running total and see where things are, so. But I'll take the, the bucket idea is a great idea, so I'll see if I can figure out how to do that and add that column in, so.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Reiner, did we have 52 applications, is that correct?
Correct. I think earlier I might have incorrectly said 54, it's 52 applications.
Okay. 52 presentations after, this has been with Long Term Recovery for a year, seems like a lot. I would almost be in favor of the video presentations, as Mayor Melendez suggested, but I'm not even sure we need that at this point, because we have, I mean, not in this packet, we have a giant packet. Counselor Jones held it up earlier. We have a lot of information. We have applications with very detailed explanations about what these people have applied for. I just think 52 presentations, and then us having to come to a table and have more discussion about it is a lot. And I just want to see this money distributed to the community at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
I agree. I think if, I mean, to get all these applicants to make a video of themselves, I mean, that's a lot of outreach, that's a lot of work combining all these together. And then the time it takes to get that done, and then to give it to all of us, and then give us time to review them all, I mean, we're putting ourselves way out there. And if it's needed, how about we sit down and come up with a criteria first? And if there are certain things, like, there's a lot, there seems to be, to me, many CIP projects on here for the town, that maybe those are items where we decide, we've given a lot to CIPs, we may not want to give so much right now, because we should give more to the community. This was the opportunity now to deal with our community. So maybe those are things we can cross off. And it'll change things much, very drastically and very quickly, when you start going in here and you start taking some things out, because you, you come up with your own analysis of what you don't want to possibly fund at this moment. Or that you think that there's more funding somewhere else with a larger purse than what we have. But I think, me, I would like to start with the Option Five, which is coming together with, you know, look at the spreadsheet, come together, sit at the table, do, work on the spreadsheet together and come up with a criteria. And let's, we start off, because we might, who knows, might be very close with each other, who knows? And just start there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do like Counselor Jones' information that he provided. I agree with Counselor Casiri about having the 52 come back, that's a lot. And we do have all the information in front of us. We just need to review it, make a decision in a timely and efficient manner, as best as we can. Working on a spreadsheet to bring it all together and then go from there. Because ultimately, we still have to do this decision, then it still has to go to the RTM to make a decision. So the best thing we can do is work on our worksheet, come back together as a working group that has been previously stated, and we can be able to forward it on to the RTM so that we can distribute the money in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Bonggardner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think for starters, you know, just again, to reiterate what Counselor Borlon stated, certainly the Long Term Recovery Committee has been, has been timed. And just want to acknowledge, you know, the committee members have put in the time and attention to refining this process. Now, obviously, it falls in the lap of the town council. And I very much welcome the opportunity for, in terms of individually, in terms of proposals, to certainly come to this with an open mind. You know, and we all have the varying, you know, bring different scope sets and interests to the council, and the issues, we are passionate about. And so I think it would, you know, I'm actually really interested to see what, you know, individual counselors would have to propose as far as their own budget, you know, politics and certainly governance is, you know, you don't always hit what you want. And it, you know, in some cases, concessions and, you know, and compromising. And so, especially in a community that is as diverse as ours, you know, individual counselor does have a monopoly on good ideas. So I would very much welcome the opportunity to hear from other counselors, learn their priorities, and, you know, just hear every counselor make their case for spending priorities that, you know, obviously, many of these projects, we wish we could fund all of them, but obviously, we don't have the capacity to do that. We have funding requests that exceed the money available to expend for, you know, as far as ARPA funds go. So as far as the process goes, you know, what we, you know, I will be supporting Option Three this evening. But, you know, yes, it may be cumbersome, however, to, you know, to have 52 presentations. I don't expect that if we were to have, you know, presentations made by applicants, that 52 applicants will show up, so to speak. I think you can start trading that list if, you know, if there are people who are really serious about their proposals, I'm sure they would make the time to, to present. Again, not a deal breaker, but I think it would be, you know, it certainly, I think helped inform some of the decisions I've made, even after having reviewed each individual application. application very thoroughly. So with that stated, you know, thank you to all the councillors who have put their time and attention on this. It's very important to get this right. Nothing but to, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess what I think is, you know, obviously, we would not be interviewing 52 people. So it'd be a matter of, at that point, in some ways, in some capacity, I also agree with Option Three with Councillor McBride in the sense that, you know, if you do a video, that's a lot to ask them, the group, on a short notice, and then we have to watch them all. And then if you have questions, you can't ask them. But if we do Option Three and we're not bringing all 52 people in, I do think there needs to be a bit of a breakout session where we're going through. There might be a process of elimination off our top of our heads where we might automatically want to eliminate 10 immediately. So by doing such, you know, that would be, or 20 there could be. Remember, everyone on here can't be funded anyway. Actually, if you take like five of these top, I don't know, like 15 of these, you would end up using all the money. So it wouldn't make sense to interview all 52. I think there's a way to narrow this down, get to our top one, you know, our top few and in those categories or buckets that were described, that are in those, you know, areas of concern, and then interview them and then make our final decisions, you know, using, you know, the grid that Bruce proposed. And again, I apologize, I have not been able to see it yet, just due to my work restraints getting, but I will take a look over the next, you know, before we meet again and see, you know, exactly how to play around with it and see how I can see it function. I don't feel comfortable voting on that tonight because I have not had a chance to really dive into it. But Option Three, to me, is a great option and we can always use whatever grid without adding an Option Five. I mean, anything that anybody brings to the table on the day of the discussion could be utilized, grids, formulas, any type of way. But I think Option Three's the best and I think we need to narrow it down in that group or that committee to the top 25, but making sure that we're hitting all those areas of need. And then go from there and then have them come in to present and in person, because I think the dialogue and questions are different versus a video that you're not going to get. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, we're not voting on this tonight. This is just for direction, for Director Reiner.
How are we going to take the consensus?
I think Director Reiner's probably taken notes for what each councillor has expressed support for. I don't know if there's necessarily majority support for anything. I mean, we can go around again and people can express the, the option that they are favoring. I guess we could just, do you have the direction you need?
Well, I think, I've heard, I don't think I have really any consensus on any one option at this point in time. Everybody's looking for something a little bit different. But I do think if we move forward with Option Number One, asking some clarifying questions specifically about what applicants could or could not live without from a funding perspective, I think that's really one of the key pieces of information. Then if the council holds a Cal that this is the only agenda item, breaks down some additional criteria of how you want to maybe reduce that list of 52 down based on parameters that you may or may not all agree with, at that point in time, it might then be easier to decide, do you then need to hold interviews? And then if so, is it a video? Is it select or is it the full of what's left? So that might be the best option of moving forward.
I'm good with that.
Good with that.
Yep. Okay. Seen a lot of shaking heads.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Good, we have consensus.
All right. On to Community Investment Fund, Round Two.
So, actually, I don't know if somebody wants to make the motion first and then I have a little bit of an explanation.
Sure, I'll put the motion on the floor.
And note, there is a revised motion that I passed out.
Okay. I make a motion to recommend a resolution endorsing the submittal of an application to the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, DECD, for Round Two of the Connecticut Community Investment Fund, CIF, Grant Program, and to authorize the Town Manager to execute all grant documents and accept grant funding for said grant. Whereas pursuant to Section 112 of Public Act 2111, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the Town of Groton make an application to the state for $6 million in order to undertake the Groton Heights remediation and the former Pleasant Valley School remediation and demolition, and to execute an assistance agreement now, therefore, be it resolved by the Groton Town Council, one, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by Section 112 of Public Act 2111; two, that the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the Town of Groton in an amount not to exceed $6 million is hereby approved, and that John Burden Town Manager is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Groton. And may it further be resolved that the Groton Town Council supports the submission of an application to the Community Investment Fund grant by the TVCCA for up to $12 million for TVCCA new building construction, so moved.
Second, Borlon?
Moved by Melendez, second by Borlon.
All right, thank you. So revised resolution, yeah, resolution here, there was some specific language that the state required. And after the last council meeting, we had met with TVCCA and had a meeting with the folks at the state, and they had actually recommended that the town only apply for the direct town applications and that TVCCA make their own independent application. So for example, some of the other municipalities that received multiple funding requests, the municipality was only, only received one, and it was other partner organizations that had applied on their own, working together with the municipality. So the state thought it would be a much stronger application for TVCCA. If they apply for it, we're doing weekly calls with TVCCA so that we can work together with them to make sure it's a successful and well put together application. So again, still the same thing, we're still working in partnership. They will just be the lead on that application. And then if they receive it, the administration of it also.
Thank you. Councillor Borlon?
Could you just explain number one?
Yes, just the, under the resolve by the Town Council, that we had discussed, so there are conditions and prerequisite for the state financial assistance. So those are the items of how the money shall be used, as we spoke about before, that it could be used, this is an economic development grant that, let me see if I have all those conditions right in front of me. But basically, the parameters that we had discussed in the, at the Cal meeting for, for this item. As I, as I look for those, does anybody have any additional questions?
I might have something after that. No, that was my only question, that section.
Let me just check on that. Any other questions?
So, Mr. End, really, all you're doing here is just making, is giving us a much better chance of getting these grants to go through because you're putting them in the right categories and not sort of doubling things up in the wrong place.
Correct.
I'm good.
Can I interrupt you or are you?
No, go for it.
Okay. I didn't want to disturb you. All right. So the $6 million is being applied for, for Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley. Is there a particular amount for each item?
So we're estimating that Groton Heights is going to be somewhere in the, I'm still waiting on cost estimates for both of those. So somewhere in the $2.5 million for Groton Heights. And again, we're estimating the Pleasant Valley demolition remediation is going to be somewhere in the $3.5 million range.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. Should this be specified under Number Two, that it's for the Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley?
So in the requirement for the state, the language that they asked for is that it's under the second whereas. The way that we took this template from their language specifically for and how...
Right. I was just wondering, should those names be added into Two?
No. The, again, the template language that they had was that the filing of their application not exceed, and it had a blank for how much money and then who would be the authorized person.
And would it preclude us from adding it in this, though?
I'm trying to mirror the exact language that the state's template for the resolution required.
Well, I guess what I'm asking, I understand your template and I'm not discrediting that. I just guess that, you know, the resolve, you know, the TVCCA, we kind of earmarked that 12 for that, and it's stated exactly as, not just that we're applying for that. We say we're going for that. And I just think the names of the places that our intentions are, I think should be somewhere in this kind of resolution.
And they are, under the whereas, that second resolved for TVCCA, we put that in there, that wasn't a requirement of the state language, we put that in there, knowing that that seemed to be the number one priority from many council members at the last meeting. So I wanted to make it the intention of the council that you knew that we would also be supporting that particular application.
Sure. All right. And the number, just the number one question?
Yep, I'm working on that. Hold on one second here.
Just to let you know, I did Google it.
Okay, thanks. That's what I was trying to do while answering other questions. Thank you, Kevin. So, and really, I think a lot of that got to what those capital projects could be, brownfields remediation, affordable housing, establishment of infrastructure, those are the types of things that were mentioned in there, as well as, as I'm looking through here, you know, capital improvement, small business support. So those are the things that were referenced within that law, again, as we discussed at the Cal meeting specifically. There's a whole list that was given to the council in our Cal packets for both meetings that we discussed, that had the frequently asked questions, description of eligible projects, as it referenced that Public Act, you know, Section 112 of Public Act 2111.
No, no, I was just asking because it's a revised motion from what we had in our packet.
Correct.
And again, I do my homework head, so this was here when I arrived, and so I'm just making sure I don't have the other packet with me right now, that that number in fact is, you know, I'm asking, clarifying because it's a change to what was in the agenda packet for the last week.
Yep.
That number was not in there. So if it corresponds with that, then that's what I'm asking, that's all.
Yes. Yeah, that is the Public Act that gets into the Community Investment Fund.
Thank you.
And DECD.
Thank you. Councillor Brumgartner?
Yes, thank you. John, I would just ask, especially after, you know, once these asks will be officially made to the state, that you keep the local delegation abreast. As mentioned earlier, it is incumbent that, you know, the delegation, legislative delegation is supportive of the town's ask as well, especially given this change. It significantly changes the application as, you know, obviously, TVCCA will be applying on their own, but, you know, this just leaves two, two projects that the town will be submitting. When, you know, certainly, you know, as much as TVCCA is cited in Groton, it offers regional services that benefit the entire region. So, you know, whereas certainly, any development at Groton Heights and, you know, and Pleasant Valley would benefit the town and certainly the town coffers as far as potential property tax revenue down the road and economic development. So, and most importantly, you know, this project, these project fundings are kind of predicated on the notion, idea that they go towards really underserved communities. And, you know, there's a very significant equity piece when the state assesses these applications. So just want to bear that in mind. You know, certainly, if, you know, we will be pulling for Groton, there's going to be, this is going to be an investment that the state will be making for years, you know, even this year, it's a $98 million allocation. So these, the funding will continue for future years, but, you know, very much look forward to supporting, you know, Groton's asks and also, you know, glad we're able to identify how TVCCA can apply early before, you know, just before the deadline. So thank you for that.
Yes, we will certainly be reaching out to you, seeking, and others seeking out those letters of support. And those, that was one of the items we discussed with TVCCA on our last call with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Parker?
Thank you. Mr. Reiner, thank you for working with TVCCA. Deb is very happy as she came from the meeting tonight, and this was one of the topics we discussed this evening, is about the Groton site. That is for Groton, that will need to be done. And I understand the reasoning why we have to have two separate ones. And thank you for helping them to get this started. I'm all in favor for doing this and look forward to seeing how we can help everyone to get on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brumgartner, is that another hand?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay, so I see no other hands. So I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Care is unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On to various appointments and reappointments from November. Should be on page 32.
I make a motion recommending a resolution making the following appointments, reappointments to authorize agencies, authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. Resolved that the Town Council appoints the following individuals to authorize ABCs as noted, reappoint Eric Goodman to the Historic District Commission, appoint John Goodrich, I'm sorry, appoint Bruce McDermott to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate, reappoint Eric Goodman to the Historic District Commission, appoint John Goodrich to the Historic District Commission, appoint William Ferguson to the Historic District Commission, reappoint Michael Kane to the Planning and Zoning Commission, reappoint David Scott to the Inland Wetlands Agency, reappoint Annie Oosterwijk to Inland Wetlands Agency, reappoint Courtney McCracken to the Inland Wetlands Agency as an alternate, reappoint Gary Robbins, Inland Wetlands Agency as an alternate, appoint Ted Keatsman to the Historic District Commission as an alternate. So moved.
Second, Borlon?
Second, Brumgartner?
Okay. Moved by Melendez, seconded by Borlon.
I'd like to make an amendment.
What's your amendment?
I'd like to remove John Goodrich, Michael Kane, and Bruce McDermott and vote on them separately, please.
Second.
Michael Kane, Bruce McDermott, and Eric Goodman?
No, John Goodrich.
John Goodrich? Sorry? Okay, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, please. I wanted to touch upon some trends that I have noticed over the past couple of years regarding appointments to boards and commissions and even elected positions within our town. This trend involves the expectation and sometimes insistence from some community members or groups that applicants or candidates for certain bodies take strong stands regarding certain projects, topics... certain projects, topics, or matters involving our town. I am concerned and perplexed about this trend, especially when it comes to our boards and commissions, because these are supposed to be apolitical entities making incredibly important decisions regarding topics that are often controversial, polarizing, and crucial to making decisions to Groton. To me, the utmost importance is for members of these apolitical bodies to remain as neutral and impartial as possible. Yet, I am increasingly seeing the assertion that applicants need to take stands on topics without a full scope of the information. When you become an elected official or fill a seat on a border commission, you are given an agenda before your meetings. You are then given a plethora of information on a topic that you will be discussing. Unless a border commission member is an expert on every matter that crosses their agenda, there is no possible way a person could know everything there is to know about an item. Therefore, these matters take an incredible amount of learning, research, listening, inquiries through asking vital questions, listening to public input, listening to legal opinions and expertise from our town attorney, and then bringing our own life experiences, education, and viewpoints into decisions. So when I see applicants being asked how they will vote on a certain item, declaring how they feel about a certain item on record, or being asked about particular subject matters because they are the current polarizing controversial topic of the time period, I'm disappointed and apprehensive. What I want to see when filling vacant positions on boards or commissions is educational experience, careers, resumes, life experiences, volunteer work, morals, values, ethics, respectfulness, and proof of responsible decision-making. Most of all, I want to be able to fill these vacant seats with someone who is committed to using all of these qualities, and combine them with what they're committed to learning and researching on these results, and arrive at a prudent decision based on the totality of circumstances. So tonight, my votes will reflect my concern for this trend. As always, I will be committed to ensuring that members we fill our boards and commission with are committed to impartialness, fairness, and making the very best decisions for Groton. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilor Baumgartner?
Uh, yes, just want to speak in opposition of this amendment. As, for any person who lost or reviewed our personal appointments committee meeting, you know, the overwhelming majority of votes, including the votes we took place, that took place at our last meeting, that put forth this slate, those appointments passed unanimously. They were supported by myself, Counselor McBride, as well as Counselor Westervelt. Each of these applicants, the motion on the, the first motion on the floor, all of these application, applicants are duly qualified, have been already served on the board, you know, boards and commissions, specifically the three names that were removed this evening, two of whom already serve on the board in some capacity. In one case, Mr. Goodrich, he is already an alternate on the Historic District Commission, and Mr. Kane is already duly, you know, duly appointed a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I would implore the council to oppose this amendment, and nothing further. Thank you.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
My amendment was to just simply vote on them separately, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Westervelt, Councilor Westervelt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we going to then have a chance, if we vote on them separately, to speak about each one's qualifications?
Yes. Thank you. Councilor Bordelone?
Oh, that was going to be my question as well, for breaking it down, so we're voting, so I just want to be clear, we're voting those three out, and the rest would go through as a whole?
If-
Separate vote? Is that how we're planning to do it?
Yes. The other names that have not been removed will be taken one vote. If it passes, they're all appointed, and the other three will be taken in turn.
And there'll be a chance to discuss each of these as we go. Yeah, I just, I just think when we have a committee that's, you know, voting on things and putting forth a recommendation, it's great to hear the council wants to pick it apart, but I think it's really important that we look, you know, at the qualifications and the time served, and folks, and we can't even fill all of our boards and commissions currently with volunteers, so I just, anyway, we'll save it for when we go down the line.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I just want to clarify that I, as Counselor Baumgartner mentioned, I did vote in favor of moving this to the council. However, I did, if anyone saw the meetings, I did have some questions and concerns and reservations, and, but I didn't think it was my decision at that point to not put forth this group to the council. So, I'm in favor of this motion, because I think those three individuals should be voted on individually. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Baumgartner?
Uh, yes, I'll be agree, but I would caution that certainly, again, setting this precedent, you know, we've kind of gone down this road already as a council. You know, I voted for members served to serve on our boards or commissions that have demanded my resignation. I have voted for people who have opposed me politically for positions I've ran for. And that's okay, because, as was mentioned, this, you know, serving on boards or commissions, it's a volunteer position. It is an apolitical position, and if we set a precedent where we've removed counselors, or I'm sorry, have removed candidates for boards or commissions that do not align with our political beliefs or our point of view, I think that is concerning. And I'm not stating that, you know, what Counselor Casiri is asserting, but I would just, again, caution the council to, you know, lay to rest the, you know, just this, the effort to not move forward with applicants because of issues not relating to the work and dedication and service that you provide to individual boards and commissions. So, I just wanted to state that on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seen on our hands, we will vote on the main motion, and-
Are we voting to vote on them separately right now?
No, the vote separately first. It's amendment first.
The amendment to vote separately-
Right.
Has to be voted on first.
Right. You're correct. Okay, so we're voting on removing the, the three names from the main motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay. Baumgartner, Westervelt, and Bordelone. Abstentions? Okay. It carries six in favor, three opposed, Baumgartner, Westervelt, Bordelone, zero abstaining. So we are now, on the floor, we have the main motion. All in favor, say aye.
I thought you voted on the amendment-
Yes, so, okay. Let me just clarify.
The individuals, and then the main.
No.
You had to vote on the individuals first.
I thought we have to do the individuals, because then we would vote on them all together at the end.
We had to vote on it twice, remember?
Can we cite that in the rules?
Yeah, I'm confused here.
One second.
This is, John, they will be, it's not, at this point, it's basically four separate votes, totally separate from each other. They'll vote on the main group, and you'll have three votes on each of the others.
Okay.
Okay.
With an option for-
So order doesn't matter. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll vote on the big group together. So, just to clarify, it's Eric Goodman, William Ferguson, David Scott, Annie Osterwick, Courtney McCracken, Gary Robbins, and Ted Keatsman. All in favor, say aye.
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 Wait, excuse me, can you say those names again? Because it sounded like you included Goodman in that.
Goodman is in.
Goodman is out.
Yes, Goodrich is out. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, so now we will take up Bruce McDermott. Any discussion? Councilor Bordelone?
Um, I think Bruce McDermott has served our community quite well. He's served on the Beautification Committee, has donated art to our community, constantly looking at ways to enrich our community and its welfare and well-being, has served time on local elected positions, and pretty much, you know, takes an individual stance on things. I think it's important to collectively look at, you know, Bruce McDermott as an asset to our community, and I think he would serve very well as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Councilor Baumgartner?
Uh, thank you. I too stand in support of Mr. McDermott. He has been a volunteer for as long as I remember getting involved in politics. He is already a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, supported unanimously by this council, and that vote was placed earlier this year, and also recently applied to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate, not a regular voting member, but as an alternate. Was mentioned in our previous meeting, and I believe Counselor McBride had brought up a question just around short-term rentals in particular, and his ability to be, you know, a fair arbiter of those issues, considering that he has taken a stance on it, and, you know, he did share with us that, you know, his goal was to ensure that NZ makes the rules and, you know, welcomes the process unfolding. And so, you know, that answer to me was, you know, sufficient, in that he will be a fair arbiter on the issue irrespective of, you know, in ZANCA, seeing all the things. But again, he, the Planning and Zoning Commission takes on a plethora of land use decisions, and he has the experience, the knowledge, the skillset, and the ability and capacity to work across party lines, which is, you know, unique about Planning and Zoning Commission. It is a apolitical and bipartisan, truly nonpartisan group. So I will be supporting Mr. McDermott, who is a Republican, I should note, and with that, nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Council- I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Councilor Westervelt?
Uh, yes, I just want to speak out in support of Mr. McDermott. He's been in the town, in town politics for many, many years. He's done a lot of good on the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Beautification Committee, everything he's done, he puts his whole heart into it. I mean, we, we all have things that we, you know, feel strongly about, but I believe that he has the ability to be bipartisan or nonpartisan, and he will support what's best for the town, as he always has for many, many years. So he's got my full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I don't know Mr. McDermott personally. He seems a wonderful gentleman, and he seems very passionate in what he does, but I do have concerns over his ability to be unbiased, because I believe he is extremely opposed to short-term rentals, and I am not saying I am a fan of short-term rentals at all, but I think as a council, we need to consider people and make sure they're making unbiased decisions on, on these committees. And I think his passion, I believe, may be too far one-sided, and that his opposition may be a little too extreme for what I would recommend an individual sit on a committee. So although I think he's done excellent work in the past, and he's very passionate about what he does, I don't think, I think it would be difficult for him to be unbiased in that position. So I will not be supporting him, not because I don't think he's a terrific man and does a great job, but I think it's difficult to be on this particular committee for him to assist and give his professional advice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Mr., on Mr. McDermott's appointment as an alternate to Plan and Zoning-
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I also request a roll call vote.
Okay. Counselor Bordelone, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Aye.
Counselor Casiri?
No.
Counselor Franco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor McBride?
No.
Counselor Parker?
Abstained.
Counselor Westervelt?
Aye.
Yes. Melinda's will be no. So that fails three in favor. Bordelone, Baumgartner, Westervelt. Five opposed, one abstaining, Parker. Okay. On to John Goodrich, appointment to the Historic District Commission. Discussion? Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I had, I did a lot of review of Mr. Goodman, Mr. Goodrich as well, and I do think he's a terrific, you know, wonderful man, and he's great, he's very passionate about what he does, and there were some concerns brought to me about him in numerous areas. However, when I, when I reviewed the concerns, I didn't think they related anything to do with this Historic District Commission, because when I reviewed his resume, his skills, and his past experiences, I think he is fitting for this position. So, I take a different approach in that if people have concerns with this individual in other areas outside of the Historic District Commission, that's, that's one item of concern, but it's not, in my opinion, particularly related to this commission. So I will be supporting the Historic District Commission for John Goodrich, because I think he has the skills and the experience to add value to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelone?
Um, I just had a question. What, I guess maybe I didn't get the full, was there concerns that were risen? That, I know it was stated with McDermott that he couldn't separate from the short-term rentals. What were the concerns with Goodrich that were risen? That I, I didn't receive anything.
Nothing that I received publicly, but when I do review of individuals as part of this committee, I reach out to many people and have conversations, so it was nothing publicly, nothing, nothing roshat, I'm not saying it was terrible, it's just, there were some questions that were asked. And I don't think any of the questions that I received had anything relating to this particular appointment, so I fully support him on this, on this commission.
Interesting. Well, I mean, I mean, I think it's tough, as we've learned, I mean, what someone can do and what, you know, other people may say, you know, so that's why I was curious as to what, what's being said, because, you know, again, we said, "Don't bring any personal things along with it," and, you know, what other people may say doesn't necessarily have to be fact or true. And, you know, like Counselor Baumgartner had stated, you know, I too have voted on people that have come here week after week and stand at the podium, and, you know, degrade me and say the same things about how I should resign, but politically, I, you know, still vote them on, and so I think it's important to consider that, you know, we're all volunteers, and no one is perfect, and, you know, folks that, you know, have stated tonight that, you know, folks should act in a certain manner, I hold that up for everybody then, if that's the case. So I think it's really important when people step up to volunteer that, you know, we take that into consideration and respect, you know, people's wishes, that's what we're supposed to be about. On one hand, we complain we can't find people, and the next day, we shoot everybody down, so I don't know what we're looking for, what we want then, what's the direction? I mean, if you don't want these, then who do you want? I don't know. So I just find it very interesting. Thank you. So, it's interesting that these three are selected to be pulled out as well, but also, I'm curious as to why these three.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner?
I'd just like to align my remarks with, just made by Counselor McBride, I think he stated it succinctly, and we support him, Mr. Goodrich, for this appointment. Thank you.
Counselor Westervelt?
Thank you. When we sit here and we talk about people's qualifications and their willingness to serve onboard a commission, if we just take John Goodrich for his actual qualifications to do this, he's probably more qualified than most people are on a lot of our different commissions. our different commissions. He's got a degree in art history and preservation. He's a history buff, has been forever. His art history and preservation degree came from Boston College. He graduated cum laude from B.C. He was the top history student when he was in high school. It's a passion of his. He, right now, he's in a years-long renovation of an old house, 1745 the house was built, and he's restoring it to its original conditions in as much as he can, the windows and everything else. Yes, I think there's, I want to, excuse me, I believe that there was some alluding to current things in the town where he has been vocal, but he's also been an advocate, and he's found a lot of information on Mystic Oral School, the property up there at the Mystic Oral School. He's worked with the state archaeologist. He's found, they, he's found them in agreement with him that there's a significant Native American and colonial aspect to the Mystic Oral School, and I think we should appreciate that from him. But I also believe that this is personal in nature, and I know you're, somebody's going to point of order me about, you know, questioning people's motives, but unless you, there you go.
We are questioning counselors' motives.
Counselor Westervelt, please speak to the merits of the candidate. Thank you.
I've spoken to the merits of the candidate. He's the most qualified person for this position. And what he's done for the town in other areas, maybe not in a lot that other people have seen, I believe he is an outstanding candidate for this. I know I can't question motives, so I'm going to try to frame what I need to say. Unless you have a reason to doubt his qualifications, I find it unfathomable that you would not support someone with these qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borlon?
No, I just think that you summed it up pretty nicely, Counselor Westervelt. Again, taking the personal out of the political and, and separating. You know, it's, it's important that we, as counselors, as it was stated, do our job up here, and our job is to fill the vacancies. Just because certain people or other folks, like, you had stated, some people committed or stated whatever they said, but you're looking past that to see that he can do this. But it's just unfortunate that people or whoever's out there speaking has so much to say, you know, instead of maybe them stepping up themselves. I, I just think at some point, we have to get past the, the eye for an eye and the pointing out and, and, you know, singling out, you know, we, we were getting names put forward here, and as a council, if we start to reject names, it, it doesn't send a good precedent either. So I just encourage that we, you know, we have candidates here that can meet the qualifications, and that we work hard to filling these vacancies as we should.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think some of us were sort of prepared for this, to vote separately on individual applications. I do have a question for the proponent of the motion, why this candidate was removed from the initial motion, like that included all of the recommended, recommended names.
I'm sorry, I can't even hear what you're saying.
He's asking why you removed him.
Okay, she spoke to her motion in the beginning. If she wishes to answer your question, I will allow it, however, your time will continue to lapse.
That's okay.
My motion speaks for itself.
Okay. She does not wish to answer the question.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to clarify that my motion spoke for itself. I didn't refuse. Thanks.
Her motion speaks for itself.
Thank you.
Mr.? Counselor Westervelt?
I'll just state again that unless there's a candidate here that you find unqualified based on, you know, who, not necessarily based on who they are, but what they do and what their qualifications are that they bring, if you can't find any question in their qualifications, again, it would be unfathomable not to vote for this person. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other hands.
Mr. Mayor, I request a roll call vote.
Okay. I'll call for a vote. Counselor Borlon, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Counselor Baumgartner?
I vote in favor.
Counselor Casiri?
No.
Counselor Franco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Abstained.
Counselor Westervelt?
Aye.
Melendez will be no.
Excuse me, did you get Counselor Jones? Did I miss that one?
Yes. So this fails. Four in favor. Borlon, Baumgartner, Westervelt, McBride, four opposed. Melendez, Franco, Casiri, Jones, one abstaining Parker. Onto Michael Caine, reappointment to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, I stand in strong support of, of Mr. Michael Caine for a reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Michael has served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for some time. He also, his application was submitted by the Republican chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well respected by the entire group, attends meetings, participates in meetings, and is quite knowledgeable of land use and certainly on sustainability and resilience issues as well. So I will be supporting Mr. Caine. Mr. Caine did receive the unanimous support of the commission, and nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Eric, can we be, can anyone else recognize me for a moment? On this one, it's really important.
I'm sorry. Can, can, can those present? The council will stand in recess until 9:35.
Council's back from recess at 9:36. I ask that those present do not speak while the council's deliberating. We are on the reappointment of Michael Caine to Planning and Zoning Commission. Any discussion?
Point of clarification.
What's your point of clarification?
Could I ask that the motion that remove these be reread? I'd like to understand more of what it actually said.
So the main motion had ten names on it?
No, I understand that. Just the motion that was made, just the amendment is all I'd like to hear reread, please.
I don't have it word for word, but the amendment essentially amended the, this motion to include seven.
May I ask the counselor that put forth the amendment to please reread the amendment?
Sure.
In the interest of time, I'm not rereading a three-minute amendment.
Okay. The amendment removed three of the ten names, and we voted on them individually.
I apologize if you didn't pay attention. Sorry.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the reappointment of Michael Caine to the Planning and Zoning Commission? Counselor Westervelt?
Again, when it comes down to qualifications, Michael Caine has been doing this for the city of Groton, for the town of Groton for many years. He's probably the least polarizing person that I've ever met. He's, he does not go off on tangents. He's very methodical in everything that he does, and he's done an outstanding job. But I will speak for him. And I did listen, I did hear the amendment. And the amendment, there was nothing of substance. It was just innuendo, and I don't think that that's fair to the candidates that we removed.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
Questioning counselors' motives again. This is the second time now.
I'm sorry, there was no question of motive. All I said was it was innuendo. It was not, there was no substance to the amendment.
Counselor Westervelt, please speak to the merits of the candidate. Thank you.
Point of clarification.
What's your point of clarification?
The motion actually had, you know, posed, in my opinion, let me finish my clarification before you know me, thank you. It basically inferred character, or lack thereof, character of these people's motive.
Counselor Borlon.
It had motive in the intention, in the motion.
Point of clarification, that's not fair?
Nope, no. Listen, we're gonna, we're gonna take the temperature down in here, okay?
There's no temperature up.
It is in order to amend the main motion.
Right, but I think the motion also has intent.
Okay.
So just to be fair, I have a right to say that. There's no temperature.
Counselor Westervelt, you have the floor.
As I said, Mr. Caine is outstanding at what he does professionally, outstanding in the efforts that he has made for the town, and I think it's a disservice to dismiss him in this fashion. And again, unless there's a question about his qualifications or his ability to do this job, why would we not keep him on Planning and Zoning? There's gotta be a reason, but nobody wants to say it.
I'm done.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I, I heard the amended motion, and then Counselor Casiri speaking to her amended motion very clearly. And I think she made a lot of good points, and I can agree with her on many of them. And I have watched numerous Planning and Zoning meetings, and I take the stand of I don't want to speak negatively about any volunteer in the community. So I'm not going to put it all out there, exactly my thoughts at this time, because I will not speak negatively of a candidate. Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I, I once, I, I agree with Counselor Westervelt in that you, you can't look beyond the expertise of this individual. I mean, it's, it's unfathomable, as you said, that this would be considered if not.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
It's again going towards the motives of counselors and our thorough processes on how we vote.
Okay, and then I'll say this. So we spent a lot of time, this committee, reviewing all these applications. We came forward with these recommendations because we feel they should go to council for review. I personally voted in favor of bringing Bruce McDermott to this council, even though I didn't, was not in favor of him on the committee. The reason for that is because I wanted to bring him to this council so this council could make a decision. Unfortunately, what I thought would happen was, anyone who's going to vote for or against these individuals would actually speak as to why they wanted to vote for or against. I have expressed my concerns, each individual, whether on for or against, and I would really appreciate it if other counselors would express theirs, for or against. Thank you.
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
This is to the town clerk.
She's not on.
Oh, okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, maybe you can answer. A counselor has every right to remove an individual from this slate of people.
Absolutely, that's completely in order.
Okay, that is in our rules. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor Borlon?
I'm just surprised that I have to speak about another person again, so.
I'm just surprised that I have to speak about another person again, so it is personal when you remove somebody from a slate after they've been on there for so long.
Point of order.
Even if it is the right, I have a right to say that.
Okay, hold on. What's your point of order?
Stating that it is personal to remove someone is a violation of Robert's Rules of Order, once again stating motive of a counselor. Thank you.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, perfect.
None of this is personal.
Thank you.
There's an appointment, you have to vote yes or no on each candidate.
Got it. So, three councilors removed by a council, three board members removed by a council for their own, whatever the reason may be, as it was stated in the, what was stated at the beginning. Obviously, there's a concern, that's why they're being removed. If it wasn't, they wouldn't have been removed. So that's the obvious. The point is, is at what point in time do we stop with this, I mean, we have a guy who's been on here for twenty-something years, raised three kids in his family, worked and done work in the community, you know, is, from the meetings that I've watched, he, you know, we took an environmental stance to make sure we're looking at the community in a more environmental way. From the meetings I watch, it sounds like he supports that philosophy. He has done things with open space and GOSA and all the environmental things and trails and all that stuff that I know some of the councilors up here love, myself, and I just don't understand where and why we'd let someone go like this, but if it's gonna be the councilor's wishes and votes, that's on them, and the community will watch and see. I mean, but I think Michael Caine brings a unique, very rooted ability to connect with this community. You know, folks have stated they don't like people who are aggressive or outspoken. Mike's definitely not that. He's definitely one of the most soft-spoken guys, easy to talk to, very laid back, and stays very centrally driven on issues and not very political in nature with them, from what I've seen. He's a community member, he's friends of folks in the community, loved in his community down on Jupiter Point and across the town where he's raised three children. I encourage this council to consider putting him on. Doing this is gonna send the wrong message to the community, as to, you know, and we can't answer it here, but you can answer it to them as to why you chose not to. But I do think it will send a strong message. I don't think it will help us as a council if we do vote against, you know, certain individuals here, especially Michael Caine, and I think we deserve the respect and honor for a person to end their term when he's ready, and he's done nothing to disrespect or he was never bullying anybody or being aggressive at things that have been said. He's never done anything out of line or anything like that, so why would one just want to remove somebody without any reason? And especially what he's given up twenty years from his family to serve our community. So I just encourage this council to move forward, but the decisions made here tonight will be projected into the community, and it will have a lasting effect on some ends. Thank you.
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, a counselor does not have to speak to a certain motion, correct?
Correct.
We have every right to just vote if we so choose.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Parker.
I make a motion. We call the question and end debate.
That's one of our new rules, right?
Okay. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Westerville, you opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, abstentions? All right. So...
Simple majority, by the way.
You voted aye?
I voted aye.
Okay.
And a simple majority.
Correct. Carries five in favor, four opposed. Baumgartner, Borlon, McBride, Westerville, zero abstaining.
And Mr. Mayor, I request a roll call vote.
Okay. Counsel Borlon, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counsel Baumgartner.
Yes.
Counsel Casiri.
No.
Counsel Franco.
To move the question?
No. No, we voted on that.
On Caine?
On Caine.
No.
Counsel Jones.
No.
Okay, Counsel McBride.
Yes.
Counsel Parker.
Aye.
Abstain. Counsel Westerville.
Aye.
Okay, Melendez is a yes. So that carries five in favor, three opposed, Casiri, Franco, Jones, one abstaining, Parker. Onto Town Council regular, 2023 regular meeting calendar.
I can read the next one, Mr. Mayor, if you want.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the 2023 Town Council regular meeting schedule, be it resolved that the Town Council approves the Town Council regular meeting schedule for 2023 as follows. Tuesday, January 3, 2023, special meeting. Tuesday, February 7, 2023. Tuesday, March 7, 2023. Tuesday, April 4, 2023. Tuesday, May 2, 2023. Tuesday, June 6, 2023. Monday, July 3, 2023, due to the Fourth of July. Tuesday, August 1, 2023. Tuesday, September 5, 2023. Tuesday, October 3, 2023. Monday, November 6, 2023, due to Election Day. Tuesday, December 5, 2023. All meetings begin at 6:30 PM in the Community Room 1, Town Hall Annex, 134 Grotonlong Point Road, on the first Tuesday of each month, except for July and November, ISAMU. Seconded.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Franco. Counsel Borlon.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to check if there was a scheduling conflict. When would the primary be?
For which election?
Well, in 2023, right? We're making the calendar, so we're all up for election in November, correct? So there would be a primary, if there was to be a primary, for many of the parties or individuals or unaffiliateds or independents, there's a natural date that's...
Okay, so you're talking about the general election primary?
Correct.
That's noted on the next approval on the COW.
Right, there you go. August 8.
Okay, so these dates on this one would not affect that?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto Town Council Committee, the whole 2023 regular meeting calendar. I make a motion recommending a resolution approving the 2023 Town Council Committee of the Whole regular meeting schedule, be it resolved that the Town Council approves the Town Council Committee of the Whole regular meeting schedule for 2023 as follows. Tuesday, January 10, 2023. Tuesday, January 24, 2023. Tuesday, February 14, 2023. Tuesday, February 22, 2023. Tuesday, March 14, 2023. Tuesday, March 28, 2023. Tuesday, April 11, 2023. Tuesday, April 25, 2023. Tuesday, May 9, 2023. Tuesday, May 23, 2023. Tuesday, June 13, 2023. Tuesday, June 27, 2023. Tuesday, July 11, 2023. Tuesday, July 25, 2023. Monday, August 7, 2023. Tuesday, August 22, 2023. Tuesday, September 12, 2023. Tuesday, September 26, 2023. Tuesday, October 10, 2023. Tuesday, October 24, 2023. Tuesday, November 14, 2023. Tuesday, November 28, 2023. And Tuesday, December 12, 2023. So moved.
Seconded, Borlon.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Borlon. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously nine in favor. Onto Town Council Personal Appointments Committee, regular meeting calendar. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the 2023 Town Council Personal Appointments regular meeting schedule, be it resolved that the Town Council approves the Town Council Personal Appointments regular meeting schedule for 2023 as follows. Tuesday, January 17, 2023. Tuesday, February 21, 2023. Tuesday, March 21, 2023. Tuesday, April 18, 2023. Tuesday, May 16, 2023. Tuesday, June 20, 2023. Tuesday, July 18, 2023. Tuesday, August 15, 2023. Tuesday, September 19, 2023. Tuesday, October 17, 2023. Tuesday, November 21, 2023. Tuesday, December 19, 2023. All meetings begin at 5:30 PM in the Community Room 1, Town Hall Annex, 134 Grotonlong Point Road, on the third Tuesday of each month. So moved.
Seconded, Casiri.
I'm just realizing I didn't read that in the other motions. Any discussion?
Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously nine in favor.
Make a motion to adjourn. Seconded, Casiri.
Motion to adjourn by Counsel Franco, seconded by Counsel Casiri. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously, were adjourned at 9:54.